Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. I will go ahead and welcome our audience tonight and call the meeting to order, and we'll start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Denbar?
Here. I invite former Vice Mayor Louis Chilton, who is joining us this evening, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know we look different from that perspective, Louis, but you seem to have a bigger smile on your face back there. Next up, we're going to move to adopt tonight's agenda, but we have several changes and a couple electronic corrections to make. First, we have some numbering errors or typos that will be corrected in the official agenda, but we also have an item that is going to be moved. I think Councilmember Mueller is going to make that request.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we move current item 12 to after the presentations, so it will now be new item 11.
So because the numbering system was off, that means the administrative regular item 15-617, which is the consideration of the Yountville Community Foundation, will move to after our three presentations. And I say three presentations because what is listed here as items 9A and 9B of the consent calendar, public safety, CAL FIRE and sheriff reports will actually be in the presentation section. So we only have one item on consent, which is the filing of the financial reports, and then we will have three presentations: first CAL FIRE, second the sheriffs, and then the presentation from Rancho Cucamonga City Council. And then just a final correction, I think it's a final correction, the staff informational reports, we have one report, which is the Hopper Creek Flood Control Project Update. That report was just listed twice erroneously. So with all of that, I think we are ready for a motion to adopt the amended and corrected agenda. Is there any further stuff to straighten out? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. It was moved and seconded?
Oh, yes. So you moved it. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, I was, see, I even got out of order. Seconded by Vice Mayor. Now we have all in favor.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
What are we doing again?
That was tricky. So now, if it's not confusing enough, we're going to recess to, this is the speed round. We're going to recess to our responsibilities as the Yountville Housing Authority for our special meeting. So I will recess from our regular council meeting and call to order the Yountville Housing Authority. First item is roll call. We can recognize that all directors, is that what we're calling ourselves? Our present officers. Public comment on the housing authority? Seeing none. Election of officers, election of the chair and vice chair. Historically, I believe those are the mayor and vice mayor.
So moved.
I second.
I think that was Councilmember Dornbecker with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar, approval of minutes. I believe we have one abstention from Councilmember Durham. And just Julie, for the record, maybe we have to say this three times, but Councilmember Durham is going to abstain from the minutes on each of these authority minutes, since he was not present for them.
Moved to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that one noted exception. Presentation, Housing Authority of the City of Napa Annual Report. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Andrea Clark with the Housing Authority for the City of Napa, and I thank you for letting me come here this evening to give you a, I guess I'll do the speed round, give you an update on the town's housing activities this past year. So we're going to review what's been going on with the grants that were awarded to the town in the end of 2014, and tell you a little bit about what we've been doing with those, and then also then report on the other housing activities that we do for the town. So first of all, the town did receive two grants at the end of 2014, and the town received a CAL Home grant in the amount of $330,000 and a Home Program grant of $500,000. It took the state a little while to issue those grant contracts, but by the June 2015, the town had executed both contracts. And in this past year, we've been assisting the town with all the contract setup conditions. So each grant had their own contract conditions setups prior to being able to even access or use any of the funds. So we had to first draft several agreements between the town and the housing authority to be the administrators of the grant, and then once we drafted those contracts, then we had to send them to HCD to get them to bless them, and then finally get them back here and everybody sign them. So as the bureaucracy proceeds, it takes a little while for all of that to happen. And then we had to go through some environmental clearances with the, for the state and the federal aspect of the Home Grant, and then issue a request for notice of funding, which had to be published, we had to do a hearing and all that process, and then the state finally blessed all of that and then proceeded to send the paperwork off to HUD. And we also then had to draw up some policies and guidelines, and then for each of the grants and for, and have each of the program representatives bless those for us, and then also do applications and loan documents and a lot of setup, a lot of setup stuff. So I am proud to say that we are now ready to start spending your money. So we've already started to do some marketing and outreach. In October, I was asked to go to the Napa Board of Realtors Multiple Listing Service, their weekly meeting, and they wanted to know everything that was going on in the housing realm in the county. So I proceeded to let them know that the town of Yountville does have an owner occupied rehab program that we were beginning, and told them all about the program, gave them some information, and when I got back to my office, the homeowners association president of one of the mobile home parks had already called me and asked us to come by with flyers. So we sent out some flyers to the parks, and we do have four tenants in, well, I guess they're really homeowners, but they're tenants in one of the parks that receive assistance through our Section 8 rental assistance program to pay their space rent. And as one of the federal requirements now for a mobile home, if we're assisting it in any way, they have to have tie downs. So we, to make sure they don't fall off of their foundations during an earthquake. And so we identified four of those properties that did not have tie downs. We've contacted each of those homeowners and provided them information about how the town might be able to assist them with purchasing and making those repairs to their homes. And then we've also, like I said, we've made contact with the mobile home parks, and we hired a rehab specialist just to work for the town's program, and she is a licensed contractor. Her name is Cheryl Burkey, so you'll probably see her around here. And she's ready to go. She's pretty excited about coming here and working, and she already has received four applications. So we, and we'll process those applications. The first thing we do when we receive an application is we have to make sure they're income eligible. So that's where we're at right now, is going through the income documentation. So to give you a little background about the grants, each of the programs are to provide assistance for owner occupied housing units to be able to make the necessary repairs that need to be done to the units to make them healthy, safe, and sanitary and code compliant. So in the Home Program, since it is federal dollars that gets cycled through the state of California, that is one of the big issues that they want to make sure is that we are covering any code issues or any safety and health issues. And so in that program, the town has decided to make loans available for a maximum of $58,000 for a single-family home and $15,000 for a manufactured home or a mobile home. And they are going to be 30-year deferred payment contracts with the homeowners and at 0% interest rate, and at the end of the 30 years, they would have to pay off those loans, or if they sell the home prior to that. And under the CAL Home Program grant, we can loan up to 58,000, I'm sorry, $57,500 or $15,000 on the manufactured or mobile home. The same terms on a single-family home, the 0% interest for 30 years. And then the state wants, has made a change in the ruling as far as manufactured or mobile homes, and the term of that loan will be a 20-year loan, again at 0% interest rate, and then once they are in the home for 10 years or longer, we can start forgiving a portion or one-tenth of that amount that they borrowed, and then when we get to year 20, the loan is completely forgiven. So this, we have decided that because you've got really two pots of money and kind of different terms for each one, that we'll take the CAL Home money and really zero in on any of the mobile homes, because this is a real benefit to those homeowners then, and especially the seniors that would own these homes and need to have some repairs. And so that's going to be where we're going to kind of target those dollars first and then be working on the Home Grant funds in the single-family homes. So staff has indicated that they identified 10 homes in the housing element that they would really like to see, and they've identified that need to have some kind of structural or foundation kind of work done to them, and so those funds will be targeted, and the Home Funds will be targeted for those homes. We're going to send some flyers out to those homeowners and see if we can get some interest on those. So a little bit about how this loan program works is that, again, we've hired the rehabilitation specialist. She's a contractor. She'll work directly with the homeowners. She'll do the intake of the application, make sure they're income eligible, and then also make sure that the repairs that they're requesting are eligible under the program, too. She'll work with the contractors, getting bids for the work, and walking through the, then those bids with the homeowners, and the homeowners decide who, what contractor they want to work with. And of course, they are encouraged to choose the lowest bid, however, it is their decision. And the contracts are between the homeowner and the contractor, and then the loan agreement is between the town and the homeowner. And then our rehab specialist does work directly with the contractor through the whole phase of the project to make sure every scope of the work is being done, and funds are not released to the contractor until we know our, that work is done correctly and up to code. And then, of course, then we, after the project is done, after 35 days after the project's done, we would release any retingency funds that would be in the loan to the contractor, and the contractor would, we'd file a notice of completion. So that's sort of the quick and dirty of the process. So as part of our contract with the town, we will provide, like I said, the application services, the intake, the contractor, and then where I come in, I'm going to be working on the reporting and the financial side of it. And each of these grant programs do require quarterly reporting, which we've already been doing, even though we haven't had any real activity to report to them, and they also have annual reporting. So those will all be done and sent into the state on behalf of the town. And then we will be keeping the contract filed, the work file, and then also the loan file for the town. The original loan documents, however, will be kept here, and then the finance department would keep their own set of ledgers for each of the grants. And then as we make the loans and on an annual basis, we will go back and recertify with each of the homeowners that they still are remaining owner occupants, because these programs are designed to assist owner occupants, not rental properties. And if they want to turn them into rental properties at any point, they would have to pay off the town's loan. So that's going to be part of our monitoring process, to make sure that they remain owner occupied and that their taxes are, property taxes are kept current and their homeowner's insurance is kept current. And with mobile homes, we'll make sure that their registration with HCD remains current. So that's all going to be part of that administration of the grant and the loan servicing side of the grant, and so we have executed contracts with the town to administer those. And then as new funds become available, of course, we would see if the town wants to apply for new funds. So I put this chart up here so you can see what income level that we, these grants are and this loan program is actually targeting. So this is 80%, this is a chart showing you the 80% of median income level or low income. So a household of one, their income could not, their gross annual income could not be more than $48,900 for a family of two, $55,850, and so on. So I think with most of the seniors and most of the homeowners, we're going to be in that two to four-person household range. So again, we look at what their income is that they make today and then project that a year forward. And there are lots of different rules and regulations that the program has that tells us then how we look at income and assets. People are not penalized for having assets, however, they're encouraged to use their own assets. So we run into that with seniors that are actually trying to live on their assets, so they're not penalized for having those assets. However, any income that they would receive from those assets, that's counted along with their annual income. Okay? So next slide. So I think I went over some of the marketing things already, and again, we're really excited to be able to start launching this program. You can go to the next slide. And so I went through that. I think you were a couple of slides behind me there, so. And to then, as far as our, yep, we've done that one, too. So I guess I was doing too much of the speed version for you there. So what we do for you on, in our standard housing services contract, is we monitor and look at those affordable housing units. So the for-sale units or the rental units that the town has regulatory agreements on. So as far as the for-sale units or the owner occupied units, we send them an annual self certification each year, asking them to verify that they are still owner occupying the property. We make sure that their property taxes are being paid. We make sure that they are carrying sufficient amount of homeowner's insurance, you know, coverage on the property. And then the other aspect is we do provide some loan servicing with regards to if the homes, they, they're price restricted for whatever term of the contract is with the town. And so then occasionally, I will get homeowners interested in maybe selling their property, and so they will contact me and ask me, what is the current restricted sale price? And so I've had actually several inquiries this year, nobody really wanting to sell yet, but I've had some inquiries. So I think people are kind of looking at the market, seeing what's going on, and trying to judge then, well, how much is my restricted unit worth? And so then on the rental side of it, kind of do the same thing, but we contact the property managers and have them verify to us that they are renting the units at the appropriate rent levels and also renting them to the appropriate income levels. And so as they are getting new tenants, they are having to income certify everybody and then also adjust their rents accordingly. So this past year, we've actually had some turnover in Girardi Place, Hopper Creek, and Vineyard Oaks, and so we've provided some technical assistance to them as far as making sure that they are doing the income certification properly and also making sure that they're doing some marketing locally. I had a, had a, just recently, Jay Ryder from Vineyard Oaks was indicating that he had a unit available, a two-bedroom unit, and he was having a hard time renting it. And so I had asked him, well, had he contacted the local restaurants? And he said, no. And I says, well, perhaps maybe he should do that, because that was really, that unit at a moderate rate income. So a household of one, maybe $72,300 is the maximum income. He shouldn't have any trouble reaching out to some of our senior service workers to be able to rent that unit. So he said he was going to do a little more outreach. Anyway, he does have a two-bedroom unit, if anybody's listening, and it's going to rent at $1795 a month, and the tenant would be paying all the utilities. And I think that wraps it up for my report this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions from the council?
I have one question.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I know you mentioned that one of the services you provide us is in insuring and supporting people who are in these affordable income or low-income affordable housing units. And given that there's been the current switch or swing in the housing market in Yountville, are we confident or do we have process in place where we're going to ensure that, should some of these units be intended for sale, that they're going to be able to hold and retain and restrict those covenants? Because I know historically, there've been some challenges with ensuring that those are entitled and properly listed on loan docs, as far as when a new tenant comes in that they're aware of the encumbrances associated with that? How are we dealing with that process?
Well, we went back through, and I think those were more of the issue with the ownership units, and it had to do with some of the financing and some of the predatory financing that was going on. So we did go through all of the homeowner units and make sure that we had current notices recorded, so that any kind of foreclosure action that would happen, the town would be notified. And then you could only hope that when the title company is doing their preliminary title searches, if somebody is selling their property, that they do pick up these affordable housing agreements. They're all recorded against the properties, and so, you know, we, from time to time, we go through and just look at the county records and see if there's been any kind of documents changing hands with some of the owners of the properties. That's really about the best we can do, except for, you know, personal contact and making sure everybody knows that, yes, you still have that agreement with the town, and if you want to sell your property, you need to let us know, that type of thing. So, you know, that's about it. Yeah. We're feeling pretty confident that there isn't the predatory lending going on that went on, you know, 10 years ago, and however, that adjustable rate mortgage is being spoken out there in the world again, and that's kind of scary.
Just one comment, and we realize when we're talking about, we've talked a little bit about as we start generating a bit more funding back into our Housing Opportunity Fund, that one of the objectives that the council may want to consider is purchasing when some of these affordable deed restricted units come up, because then we could put them back into the rental market. So I just want to share, we're building some of that up, and it's something that has been expressed by the council. The Housing Opportunity Fund balance is still relatively low, because we actually built a lot of units in the last five years, so it'll be a while before we build it back up. But that was one of our thoughts, is that as we get a few new things coming in, that that could be a target, because the town has the right of first refusal on all of our deed restricted for-sale homeownership property.
Great. I did have one other question, if I could ask, going back to your, is it a rehab specialist or whatever the title was, do they, does that person pre-qualify the subcontractors that are then presented to the homeowner, so the homeowner feels, can feel confident that they are legit with their bidding and quality work and all that?
So we have, we will, part of this outreach we're going to be doing is with some of the local contractors, so let them know that the program is available and that we would entertain bids from them when we are going to have different jobs available. In that process of them signing up with us, we do go back and check to make sure that they are licensed, one with the state of California, that they do have a business license with the local entity, and that they are not on the federal debarment list. And so that is one of the big requirements of both grant programs, that we have to check that, we have to document that, and have a file for each of them. And so, yes, as we go through the bidding process, we advertise, we have a bid hotline on the Housing Authority webpage, so we know, and on our phone system, and local contractors know about this, and we then advertise if we are going to have any kind of projects that are coming up, and we do what's called a bid walk and walk the contractors through, tell them the scope of work, and then tell them when the bids are due. And so, yeah, we do a very thorough check on them. And we have a handful of contractors that like to work with us, because they know they get, you know, they are, we're required to pay them the federal dollar, you know, the federal wage. So, you know, they like that, because they know they're going to make a good wage on the project, they know they're going to get paid. So, yeah. I wanted to go back, Mr. Hall, and address your other question with regards to how are we making sure that these units aren't being turned over? Well, when they have turned over, because we've had some that have turned over, the town adopted some new documentation. So not only do we have a regulatory agreement that we record, we also record a deed of trust. It's a no-money deed of trust, because you're not lending them any monies, but it is a deed of trust, to help the title companies actually see those documents, and then it refers them back to the regulatory agreement. So that seems to be one of the markers that the title companies have told us that they, that when they do a quick search, they're looking for deeds of trust, they're not looking for regulatory agreements or first option to purchase agreements or any of those other creative titles that we've put on these documents over the years. But I can tell you that our local title managers are very aware of the program, the tax assessor's offices, so anytime there's any kind of activity, boy, they're on the phone to me and go, okay, did it sell at a restricted price? Do I have to assess it at that restricted price? So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I see that we have no other business for the Housing Authority, so I will go ahead and adjourn from the Yountville Housing Authority, and I will convene the Yountville Finance Authority Special Meeting for January 19, and recognize that all officers are present, offering public comment on this authority, seeing none. Election of officers, if there is a motion for the mayor to be elected chair and the vice mayor to be vice chair?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second, was that Councilmember Mueller?
Sure, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To consent items, we will again recognize the abstained vote from Councilmember Durham on the minutes, so consent 5A. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe that's it for our business with the Yountville Finance Authority. So I will adjourn that special meeting, and we will convene the special meeting for the Yountville Parking Authority, again recognizing all officers are present, inviting public comment, seeing none. Again, election of the officers, I propose a motion of mayor, well, I shouldn't propose the motion, but is there a motion for chair being the mayor and vice chair being the vice mayor?
So moved.
Seconded.
I wish you can make it. Motion by Vice Mayor Hall, seconded by Councilmember Mueller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consent item, we have two, calendar, we have two items. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, I know we'll have an abstention from Councilmember Durham on item A, but all in favor for item B?
Aye.
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 And then let's go back to item A. All in favor of consent calendar item A?
Aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, but one abstention for Councilmember Durham. I believe that's all of our business for the parking authority, so we will adjourn from that special meeting and reconvene our regular Yountville Town Council meeting for January 19. And we will get back to our public comment, if there's anything for the council to hear on public comment, seeing none. We're going to move on to our one consent calendar item, which is receive and file monthly financial reports from December 2015. Is there a motion on that item?
I'll move to approve the consent.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, moving right along. So, now we are going, going to go to our first presentation, which is going to be from CalFire. Uh, it'll be our, uh, quarterly report. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and, uh, council members. I'm Steve Hawkes, Battalion Chief for CalFire, Napa County Fire here in Yountville. Before I go into the quarterly report, I'd just like to make mention that we had a very large, uh, eucalyptus tree come down here at four-thirty this afternoon, and fell, uh, completely across Solano Avenue, about a hundred yards south of town. So, we're working with, uh, county roads to, uh, clear that tree, uh, but it's really large, it's going to take a while, it's probably going to be a couple more hours before we have the road completely open, so if, um, residents are out there, please avoid Solano between Hoffman and, uh, the, uh, basically the fire station on, uh, Solano there for the next couple hours.
So, they're not, uh, traffic is not being allowed to turn on, onto Solano from California?
It, it is to be able to get into the golf course area, but we have it blocked, uh, basically at the second entrance into the golf course.
And residents that need to get access to Vineyard View Drive, or just if they can prove their residency?
They can still get in, yes.
Okay, great.
The, uh, blockage is just south of that.
Right.
Okay, uh, so, moving into the quarterly report for quarter four of two thousand fifteen, uh, we ran a, a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven medical aid calls out of our, uh, four-hundred-and-two calls that the station ran for the year, so, um, it's no coincidence that medical aids continue to be the highest number of calls that, uh, we and most fire departments throughout the country run. Um, of those, ninety-six of the calls were within the town limits. Some, uh, major events that we participated in for the quarter was, uh, or, let me back up, um, we responded to a couple of structure fires. Uh, one was up just, uh, north of the city of St. Helena limits, and we had one just south of the Wooden Valley, uh, school on Wooden Valley Road. And, um, the, the one up in St. Helena, we were able to make quick response due to the location near our St. Helena fire station, and, uh, basically contained the fire to, uh, the size it was when they first arrived at scene, although it still, uh, received a lot of damage from the fire, as well as smoke damage throughout the house. The one, um, on Wooden Valley Crossroad was almost fully involved when the first, uh, fire unit arrived at scene, and so that was the complete loss to that structure, and then it extended into a, a large, roughly eight-thousand-square-foot barn with, uh, tractors and, and a couple vehicles inside, and that was, uh, complete loss as well. Uh, we also had a, uh, major injury vehicle accident out here on Silverado Trail that had, uh, Silverado Trail shut down for a couple hours and, uh, during high-traffic time, and you can imagine the havoc that that wreaked with, uh, traffic. Events that we participated in were Yountville Days, uh, the Breast Cancer Five-K Run, annual Tree Light-in Ceremony, and, uh, Festival of Lights. We also held our, as we do every year, our, what we call the Napa County, uh, Chiefs and Firefighter of the Year Dinner at our Yountville Station, and each of our nine volunteer fire companies, uh, are, are able to honor, uh, one of their members, uh, for their outstanding commitment and service to their, their area that they serve. And, uh, we also honored one of our, um, career personnel for outstanding service for the year, so we were honored, uh, once again, to host that dinner. This year, we hosted our toy drive, and, uh, we, we think it was another success, and we really appreciate the, uh, commitment from the community to help us with that, because we couldn't do it without everyone's support. So, we appreciate that, and we look forward to next year. Um, we recently, it's probably been two or three months ago, purchased a Lucas device, and, uh, we carry it on our Engine Twelve here at Yountville Station. We, we purchased two of them for Napa County Fire, one's out in Capel, um, because of the remoteness, but also the, the second one is here on our Engine Twelve, and a Lucas device, um, provides, um, chest compressions during a CPR call, and it provides, um, good depth and, uh, interval of chest compressions, does better than what, um, you know, average firefighter can do. Um, so, we're, we're happy to have that, and it's a good part of our, uh, commit, uh, equipment now that we carry on Engine Twelve, and I think it'll be a good benefit to, uh, here, Yountville community. A safety message for this quarter is, uh, El Nino is here, thankfully. Uh, we're getting a lot of good rain, starting to fill up our local reservoirs, and we're appreciative of that. Um, but just remember that with the rain comes, uh, really slick roads, so be careful driving out there, always wear your seatbelts, and, uh, uh, never drive through flooded roadways. As we learn in our training with Swiftwater Rescue, uh, water is relentless and powerful, and you never know what it could do to a surface that's underneath the roadway. So, it may not always be there, so don't assume that the roadway is always there, it's better just to avoid driving through, uh, flooded roadways. So, uh, that's it for the quarterly report. Any questions?
Questions to the report?
No.
No, thank you very much, and, and I also would assume that if, and I think we have a break in the storm right now, so this may not be an issue, but with, uh, residents that were maybe trying to get to our corp yard to get sandbag, uh, filling with the tree down, they were, they're just going to be turned away?
Let me clarify one thing, residents do not go to the corp yard to get sandbags.
Okay.
The sandbag station is located-
Oh, that's right.
-at Yountville Community Park. It's been operating, um, has been in place now for about ten days, continues to be staffed, so-
Glad I brought it up.
It's, that is a, a very good thing, because we really don't want to encourage people to go through one of the lowest-lying areas, subject to flooding, to get their sandbags. It's sort of a oxymoron, so we've changed that, and I would also point out, we have a great partnership with the County of Napa and their Public Works Department, and we jointly set up that station right there at, uh, Grant and, um, Washington at the very north end, there at the town by the cemetery, so it's a really accessible location. You are required to bring your own labor, and the bags are there, and we periodically, we, we replenish both bags and sand as needed.
Okay.
And we did have, uh, with the, this morning's rain, uh, I guess on Hopper Creek there at Oak Circle was, uh, a little bit of water come out into the roadway. I drove by, uh, a little after eight o'clock this morning, just to check it out, and then the next little report came out, uh, eleven o'clock-ish, and it just shows how quickly that the, their creeks can rise and equally as fast recede, so just be careful out there.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the report. Next up, we are going to have our Sheriff's Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so, before we get started, I, I thought I would mention something. Um, I was speaking with, uh, a certain sheriff's captain, who used to be a sheriff's sergeant that used to work here. I won't mention his name, but he's quite a bit smaller than I am, a little bit older. Uh, but he was telling me that he also had to do a quarterly presentation, kind of just after he got here, and he discovered at some point that, uh, he felt it was one of his duties and not a responsibility to, to make firemen jokes. So, uh, he didn't tell me that was my job or anything like that, but he felt like I needed to know. But, uh, I figured since this is my first, you know, go, and, and quite frankly, I wasn't sure who was going first and who was going second, maybe I would just hold off this time, maybe we'll make some jokes next time, but, uh, anyway.
We do, we do tend to rotate who goes first and second, just to warn you.
Well, I'll keep them, thank you, tactically.
For that very reason.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's good to know, thanks for the information. Um, so, also, obviously, uh, we've got a bit of changing the guards with the Sheriff's Department here, and, uh, with that in mind, doing the quarterly report, I had a lot of conversations with different people about the statistics and what they're showing and what they mean, and, and really, quite frankly, for me, they didn't have a lot of meaning because I didn't have a lot of background. I mean, I've worked for the Sheriff's Department for almost twenty years, never been assigned here, and while I'm aware of it, you know, peripherally, obviously, uh, having worked, like I said, here for a long time, um, I thought it'd be interesting to do kind of a five-year analysis, just to see where things have been and where we're going, and, and whether the concerns are the same or different, or whatever. So, with that in mind, um, I guess we'll start with, uh, just basically our community activities this quarter. Um, there's no slide for it, but essentially, we had Festival of Lights and Yountville Days Parade. Again, I, I wasn't here to participate, from my understanding, there were some changes in the way the, uh, Festival of Lights was laid out, and it made things much more smooth from a public safety perspective, so kudos to whoever, uh, was responsible for that. There were no real, uh, real, uh, events, uh, note, as far as we're concerned, no real disturbances or arrests were made during those things. Uh, we start with the slides. Uh, you can see, Yountville's a great place to live, there's basically non-existent violent crime right here, with zero homicides, zero rapes, zero robberies throughout the year. We did have two assaults with weapons, uh, twenty simple assaults, which would be, you know, basically your minor scuffles, batteries, that sort of thing, and three cases of domestic violence annually. Uh, if we could get the next slide. And then we move on to the property crimes, again, uh, fairly low. We did have, kind of an interesting side note, um, well, I guess we'll get to that in a second, but you'll, you'll see the burglaries, residential, we had four, uh, other, meaning, um, a business or some other place of that nature. Uh, so, Prop forty-sevens were all, were passed in two thousand fourteen, the end of two thousand fourteen, and, and one of the major effects that had on law enforcement was it, it changed a lot of what were previously either a wobbler, which means to be charged as a misdemeanor or a felony, or straight felonies to misdemeanors. And one of the effects it has was it changed the limit. It used to be to, to commit a felony theft, you had to steal more than four hundred dollars. Now, you have to steal more than nine fifty. So, you would think that, looking at the statistics, you would expect that there would be a higher number of petty thefts if things were to remain equal. But you could see, uh, this year, we had, uh, twenty-two grand thefts, which was more than the petty thefts, with thirteen. So, kind of interesting, I guess, I have a theory on why that is, we'll get to that in a few slides, but I just thought it was kind of interesting, side note. Um, anecdotally, many people believe, and, and it could just be that Yountville is such an anomaly, uh, being a, such a small, tight-knit community, um, with a high visitor population, that the statistics maybe don't hold true as they might in a larger population. But, uh, I thought that was kind of interesting. So, moving on, three grand thefts, uh, eight cases of vandalism annually, again, um, fairly low numbers, I would think. Uh, annually this year, we had thirty-four-hundred-and-thirty calls for service, we prepared a hundred-and-ninety-two criminal investigation reports, um, thirty-four arrests were made, fourteen, uh, misdemeanor citations, a hundred-and-fifty-six traffic citations, five-hundred-and-fifty parking citations. Uh, again, historically, the two main concerns in Yountville, which, good or bad, depending on how you look at it, are historically traffic and parking, so it's reflective in the statistics, obviously. As far as collisions go, uh, it was pointed out to me that our numbers are a little bit different than the firemen, because they have sort of a report for every collision they go to, whereas we don't. Uh, we only write reports, um, generally speaking, on injury or, or, excuse me, uh, yeah, minor injury to, to injuries. Sometimes we'll write them on the non-injuries, but not as often. Oftentimes, it can be, uh, accomplished just with an exchange of information between drivers, will facilitate that, um, help them get on their way quicker. Um, and you can see we had no fatal collisions this year. So, officer-initiated activity for this quarter, um, you can see the different breakdowns between, uh, Sheriff's Department activity, meaning deputies that are assigned to Valley Patrol that may be operating within the town of Yountville for one reason or another, and as well as, uh, your Yountville assigned personnel. A total amount of what we call traffic stops, which is self-explanatory, pedestrian checks, meaning, uh, for some reason, someone's drawn our attention, so we stop to talk to them. Uh, patrol checks, meaning, uh, you know, it's sort of what it sounds like, you're just checking an area, looking, seeing if there's anything of note. Um, vehicle checks, again, relates to a suspicious vehicle, whether, generally speaking, in this case, uh, what a deputy might notice, something out of the ordinary. And then parking issues. Uh, you see, there's two-hundred-and-twenty-one total calls for that. As far as traffic stops go this quarter, we had seventy-five total stops, uh, fifty-one warnings were issued, twenty-four citations. So, uh, five-year overview of the crimes against property. I went back to two thousand eleven, so including two thousand fifteen, it's a total span of five years. Burglary residentials, we averaged six, um, others, seven, petty theft, nineteen, theft grand, fourteen, uh, auto, three, and vandalism, eight. And you can see realistically, the numbers stay more or less the same, there's some variations from year to year. Uh, we get spikes, but that's just the cyclical nature of the business, uh, as in any business, you know, some, some things happen more often in some years than others. Uh, moving to the next slide. Um, this would show essentially the percentage of, uh, property crimes reported in two thousand fifteen, it's a five-year average, in other words, if, if, for instance, burglary, other, the, the average was eight, uh, this year, we had, let's say, three, then, then it would be a forty percent of average. Um, the only place, again, where you see a spike really, is, um, at least in the positive or negative direction, depending on how you look at it, is the grand theft, a hundred-and-sixty percent of average, kind of high. Um, burglaries down, petty thefts down, and, um, auto theft and vandalism pretty much equal. Yeah. Uh, crimes against persons, again, great town to live, great town to visit, average violent crime is basically non-existent, um, with the occasional ballyhoo. Assaults with weapons, average two over the five years, simple assaults, an average of seventeen, domestic violence, an average of three. And again, you can see that, um, the averages more or less stay fairly stagnant. Um, next slide. So, against the five-year average, the only thing that we're really up on is simple assaults. Um, but again, uh, with the pool being kind of as small as it is, it's really hard to be too overly concerned about it, uh, when you go from, you know, four assaults to five assaults. It's a pretty significant increase statistically, but while it's important to the people involved from a greater perspective, perhaps not quite as, uh, as telling. Next slide. Uh, calls for service, so an average of about thirty-one hundred-and-thirty-eight over the five years, uh, about a hundred-and-eighty-nine reports, thirty-five arrests, eighteen misdemeanor citations, a hundred-and-twelve traffic citations, and four-hundred-and-forty-one parking citations. What you'll notice is, uh, calls for service were up this year, reports were basically average, arrests more or less average, a little down. Uh, where we're up the most significantly is in, uh, traffic citations and parking citations over the average. And actually, that's going back a couple years, uh, two thousand fourteen was also higher as well. Traffic collisions, again, basically the same, um, the average of thirteen, uh, non-injury this year was, was fifteen, um, injury accidents, three, that was the average, this year was three, no fatalities. Uh, so, again, non-injuries were up, maybe a hundred-and-fifteen percent of, uh, average, and, uh, injuries are, are the same, a hundred percent of average. Officer-initiated activities, um, average traffic stops, three-hundred-and-seventy. What's interesting is, is, um, that tends to fluctuate a bit, but that was basically the, we're a little higher than average this year, uh, pedestrian checks, about twenty-four, patrol checks, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight, vehicle checks, thirty-seven, and parking issues, three-hundred-and-seven. Um, it's what's interesting about the parking, is you'll notice probably significantly a dramatic increase over the last five years. Part of that has to do with, uh, we have a volunteer that writes parking citations, he's enthusiastic about it, uh, and, uh, I think the deputies also have probably increased their activity a bit in that regard. So, traffic stops, again, a little higher than the average, and, again, mentioning the vehicle checks and parking issues, uh, parking's about a hundred-and-thirty-seven percent of average, um, for the five years. So, um, other than that, uh, we've had, um, six cars, as far as the abatement program goes, we marked six cars for towing. Of those, we gained voluntary compliance with, uh, from five, we ended up towing one, which is a pretty, kind of the point of the whole thing, right, to get people to take responsibility for their own front yards, if you will. Um, and then the highlighted cases this quarter, um, really have to do with serial thief, and it's kind of a funny term, because it brings to mind someone stealing Cheerios, but clearly not the case. Uh, and, and while some of them, it might be called a burglary, technically, what, this is where the grand theft spike comes from. So, uh, it mentioned, I mentioned earlier, obviously, that the grand thefts are higher than the petty thefts, and I think realistically where that came from was we had this series of, uh, grand thefts from vehicles, which might normally be reported as burglary, but the interesting thing about Yountville is people feel so safe here, is nobody locks anything. So, can't be a burglary if the doors aren't locked, has to, it's classified as a theft, although the, the end result is the same, uh, more or less. People are losing stuff because they're not locking their doors, which, um, you know, we're not here to judge anyone for how they choose to live their lifestyle, if that's the way you want to do it, that's fine, but we, we should be aware that while Yountville is, is a great place to live, and the crime, uh, the crime rate is low, and, and there's lots of great people living and coming through town occasionally, uh, what happens is someone comes through town who realizes this and, uh, capitalizes on it. And, um, hopefully, some people will start locking things, and if not, that's okay, too. We're here to help and, uh, do what we can. Any questions?
Questions about the report? Councilmember Durham?
Um, in, in the report we received as well, there was a, a statement about the volunteer.
Yes.
Is that still active, or what's the status of that?
We do still have a volunteer. He is on sort of a hiatus for some personal reasons, and we expect him back in about six weeks.
Okay. Is there a set schedule, time, program that he's on, besides my car?
That's an excellent question, that I'd love to answer for you. But, yeah, he actually hasn't, he actually hasn't been working since I've been here. So what his fixed schedule is, I don't know. I know that he works about 40 hours a month.
I partially joke, only partially, but only because of the fact that what I see, I get up early in the morning to head to nap and come back, so, and that's when a lot of the business deliveries are happening during the day, which seems to be, in my personal opinion, a safety issue in terms of people accessing, getting on the highway at the north, at the north end of town. And being able to navigate down the street with the big delivery trucks and stuff. So that's, that's my inquiry about the, about the scheduled hours that that person works.
Yeah, he doesn't work terribly early. He's retired. So, and honestly, I'm not certain what time he comes in. I think it's probably later morning or noonish.
It might be better that we don't drill down too closely on exactly when the
No, which is fine.
Patrol is happening.
And I paid, I paid one of the tickets, actually. But the other was forgiven legally. So, I just, my statement is that if possible, there should be some focus on that issue during those early mornings as well. Because it is a busy time in this town, especially during the summertime with all the deliveries.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things we're faced with is the balance between commerce and the structure of the town. You know, it's old world in the sense that the streets are narrow, and there's not much shoulder, which, you know, much to the chagrin of those that would like to have electric vehicles in their own lanes, there just isn't any room. Secondarily, the problem with that is maneuvering vehicles that are delivery trucks and whatnot around the town is somewhat difficult. So, obviously, I'm open to suggestion and direction. The issue becomes, someone has to make a delivery to, well, I don't want to name any businesses, but just say a business on Washington Street, where there isn't really any access on the side or the back. I have noticed, for instance, delivery trucks parking in the parking lot of the marketplace and walking across, which I think is a great idea, but that opportunity is not always available. So then the question becomes, how do we address that situation in an equitable manner and still have commerce come forward and move on and that sort of thing?
And I agree.
I'm not dismissing the safety issue at all.
I understand completely. I just want to see if we can have that discussion in the future then.
Sure, absolutely.
That's great.
A couple of things. What I would encourage any of you, when you see a circumstance or a resident, either let myself or John know, John and I communicate fairly often regularly. We share information, because it's always helpful, because some people see something differently at a point in time. Because what I would say, the area that you're targeting, Councilmember Durham, is probably never would have been really under the jurisdiction of what the volunteer would have likely uncovered and managed, because that person is really looking more at the more structured parking, and what you're really talking about is commercial driver behavior. And actually, I have a short list as part of our orientation to go with unknown locations and rough timings. So, I really would encourage some of you that have that, because in many cases, ours are targeted, and certain things that we might do with a commercial driver are very different than the occasional residential or visitor parking, because in many cases, a commercial driver has options, should know better, gets lazy and chooses not to, and what we just need to do is have a periodic opportunity to remind them that when they're in Yaunville, they need to do what they need to do properly. So, that's kind of our philosophy. So, I'd be curious as to what all you might have, and I'll add it to the short list that we have.
Thank you.
And adding to that, too, if you do happen to see something in the early morning hours, particularly egregious, or causes you some safety concerns, I would encourage you to call, call dispatch and have a deputy sent out to investigate it.
Thank you very much.
If there aren't anybody on duty here at the time.
Councilmember Durham, back.
Yes, I just, I was aware of the serial robberies of cars. I was just wondering if the perpetrator had been arrested and...
Well, that's an interesting question. Sometimes in law enforcement, especially with serial thieves or serial perpetrators of other kinds, they do get arrested and the crimes stop, and it's not necessarily because we arrested them. They just happened to be in custody somewhere else for something else they got caught for. In this particular case, there was a person of interest that was arrested in a different jurisdiction for a related instance, you might say. However, there were, some of the activity continued after that. So, it could have been more than one person, however, that has seemed to have stopped for whatever reason. Whether someone got arrested somewhere, we just don't realize that they're the person that was responsible, you know, hard to say. But, to answer the question more directly, I guess, is anyone being prosecuted for those thefts? Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks for the report and the five-year look back. It's always, you know, it's healthy to kind of look at the average of how things have gone, and I think we're really fortunate, as you indicated, in this community, but you can never take things for granted. See, you lock your car and park in your parking spot.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I appreciated that as well. One of the things that you highlighted, though, is our statistics can skew fairly significantly without the data really backing that up. And so it's kind of important to be recognizing that. But I agree that looking back at trends really helps us put into context what the numbers really mean. So thank you for that.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
One question, Sergeant Crawford, before you go, is could you share on the role of surveillance camera and some of the video capturing that you may have been able to use in the investigations, and how if that played any role in your ability to move forward on a few of the cases?
Absolutely. I mean, a good portion of my career was spent in our investigative unit, both as a detective and as the sergeant supervising the unit. And we've solved many cases based on video, or at least in part, based on video. It's very helpful in identifying suspects. In fact, if you recall the Manny Reyes murder from years ago, we were able to get his suspect's picture from video of a market in Napa. So, more recently, we were, again, able to get surveillance video of a suspect who had stolen a couple of wallets from a local restaurant, and was seen making purchases in a local establishment in Napa, on video. And because of that, he'll be prosecuted. And we were able to identify him, not only identify, excuse me, to identify him, but also prove elements of the crime in that we could see swiping the credit card that wasn't his, the color of the credit card that wasn't his, which matched the victim's card, signing the electronic, I don't even know what they call it, but the little electronic thing at the cash register. So, very helpful. And there's certainly been other times as well, where they have what they call the LPR style of cameras, which is a license plate reader. Particularly in a town like Yaunville, it basically has three points of ingress and egress. You could really collect a lot of data, not necessarily from the law enforcement perspective, maybe it'd be a town, more of a town collection, obviously accessible by the Sheriff's Department or the law enforcement. And if you nail down a general timeframe, especially in a place like Yaunville, where there's not a lot moving after midnight, you could really get a good idea of who might be responsible for something that happened. Like I say, especially in early morning hours, which is when a lot of this stuff tends to happen.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Appreciate it. We are going to move on to our third presentation, which is kind of a fun one for us. It's going to highlight the relationship that the town of Yaunville has developed with the city of Rancho Cucamonga. And I believe we're going to start with an introduction from Steve, and then a video.
Very quickly, what I, our team was down for some training in early December, and they kept encouraging us to make sure we were going to the council meeting, and we weren't quite sure why. Now, some of you may find it surprising that I was willing to go to a council meeting, because I'm sort of a council meeting junkie. But really, on, what was really quite nice is, the city of Rancho Cucamonga City Council presented the town with a proclamation, and we're going to show you the presentation, and it really was a surprise to us. And it's in part of their efforts for what has been one of the more, we think, innovative and creative partnerships. And certainly, from my perspective, and you'll hear me say it, it should have been the other way around, because we've benefited incredibly from this relationship, and what you're going to find is that that council and that community and their team feels equally strong. So with that, that's probably a good segue.
Successful years with a number of clients, but we've never forgotten who our first and most important client was that we started with, and that was the town of Yaunville. And so we wanted to recognize them tonight, and I wanted to turn it over to Ingrid to say a little bit more about the work with them.
Thank you, Mr. Gilson. The town of Yaunville, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get it. The town of Yaunville, it has been really rewarding process for the shared services that we do. We met this wonderful staff, the town manager, Steve Rogers, and they just welcomed us. We, as Mr. Gilson alluded to, they were our first customers, so we were in a learning mode as they were learning also, because this is the first venture that we had undertaken. But they were so warm and welcoming, and as we collaborated and put our heads together, we were able to implement their GIS, and I guess we did a really good job, because two years later, we still have the contract, and we're continuing on, and here they are tonight. So, we are very, very appreciative of the welcome we've received. We love working with them, and we look forward to doing so much more in the future with them, so that they can grow their GIS. And now they're recognized, because they won the prestigious award, and now they're on the map and going places, very good places, as they move forward each day. So, thank you so much, Steve, and thank your mayor and city council for us, for accepting us, for trusting us that we could come in and do this work. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, Steve?
I would. I'm the president of our county council, and our staff, including all of those that you've worked with on the first phase, frankly, it's humbling for you to be thanking us, because in all honesty, the thanks goes to Mayor Michael, your council, your management team, and all of your staff that do it. And more importantly, the broader Rancho Cucamonga team, because I think your innovative, your support really has created a tremendous model for shared services that should be looked at more. Our team learns more from your team, whether it's the crews and public works, looking at how we're out in the field. We have so much more in common, even though our scale may be very different, but this is just an incredibly rewarding experience. And frankly, it's been, I think, incredibly positive, and one that we look forward to continuing. And I joked with you earlier, saying, we have several years worth of work, and we're just getting warmed up. So, again, on behalf of everybody, thank you so much. You're more than welcome. But I think, you know, as you make the problem, is I have to say that I would, without question, we know on this council that the staff that work with you learned just as much from you, and came up with new ideas for us and for our future partnerships that we may have. But more importantly, I think you hit on something, that when you can have a public agency, public agency partnerships, whether it be public, public, or public private, to allow your organization to flourish, where maybe you weren't before as far as GIS went, we're taking people to death, because we've got a great team here. This gentleman down here, Solomon, is an incredible gift for GIS information under the leadership of Ingrid, and the whole team in that department is just incredible. So, I have this proclamation I would like to present to you in your city, or your town, excuse me. There's a town of Apple Valley in this county, and believe me, when you said the city of Apple Valley, let you know, it's a town. So, I apologize for that. Whereas the Rancho Cucamonga Enterprise Geographic Information Systems Connect, Regis Connect, of the city of Rancho Cucamonga, has entered into a professional services agreement with the town of Yaunville, located in the county of Napa, for GIS shared services. And whereas the town of Yaunville is the first customer for Regis Connect, having signed the agreement in February 19, 2014, it still remains in effect. And whereas Regis Connect has completed the first phase of the GIS implementation, and progressed to the second phase, which was the design and development of a mobile app for residents and visitors to encourage more involvement in the community that they love. And whereas this app was entered into the 2015 International City County Management ICMA App Challenge Competition, and whereas on October 28, 2015, the town of Yaunville was awarded second place for their Myville application. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of Rancho Cucamonga, does hereby congratulate the town of Yaunville for this very prestigious recognition, and also expresses their appreciation and our appreciation for being the first entity to partner with Regis Connect and lead the way for others to follow. And I want to especially thank you for taking the trip down to Southern California from the beautiful Apple Valley. In fact, some of us would like to go back with you. But, no, in all sincerity, thank you so much, and thank you for all coming down, and may you have many, many years of great success.
And it looks like we'll need to understand our internet bandwidth speed capacity to see why we seem to be having a slow, I don't know if that's weather-related or Comcast-related, but we will certainly try to figure out why that wasn't running at regular speed. With that, I do think, in a bit of irony, we actually have, Regis will be up here the balance of the week, and we've got training going on for our employees. We're launching Phase Two, which is going to include a broader utilization across all levels, also including the launch of our planning tools. And this week, we'll also be having an orientation to what we're doing with our public safety, which will be our third phase. So we'll be able to start making our GIS informational layers available, so that our public safety partners can use that. So, like I mentioned, we do have a game plan, and I'm very pleased to report that, if anything, we're slightly ahead of our target schedule and under budget. But I think we're really poised this year to start seeing both at an organizational and an operational level to success. But if Apple will ever just give us the okay, we're ready to launch the Myville app, and many of you've seen the beta. So, I'm just going to quit talking about it until Apple says yes, and then we will do a full marketing outreach. But we do have, and I don't want to leave Android phones out, actually, for those of you with an Android phone, your phone could be ready to go and use it. But we do have a very exciting app that's going to allow you to share and report information, find out walking paths, systems like that, something you can use every day. Our own employees are ready to start using it, as well as our partners. So, it's an exciting tool, and I think, I do mince my words, but I do think this is a really exciting and valuable partnership that's worked well for both of us.
Great, thank you. I want to recognize our team also, that they traveled down with you, that's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting with data collection and working with their team down there to make it so robust. I remember when we were at the conference where we were first introduced to this whole project, and they had a very impressive trailer setup, and working with them is, they're really great people as well, is really good at what they're doing. I think it's a really healthy partnership for us. So, I do want to invite Samantha, is it too wide angle for us to stay in our seats?
I'll just step back.
So, I would just like, maybe lower your microphones down, so they're not right in the face of the camera. I wanted a photo to be taken that we could send down to our friends at Rancho Cucamonga. Great, thank you. Just to acknowledge that, yeah, I think your eyes were closed.
It was the reflection.
But it shows a great But it shows a great collaboration when they're willing to share something that's clearly effective in their community, and it's already paying dividends for us here. So, thank you very much for that presentation. We're going to move on to our first of four public hearings, and actually, no, we're not. We're going to move on, we almost forgot, we moved things around. Sorry, Louis, to put that little fear in you there. We are going to move on to our administrative regular item that we moved up in the agenda. This is to consider adoption of the town of Yountville's Community Foundation. I'll stop there, and welcome a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm going to move fairly quickly on this item, because you've had several meetings on it, and at the last council meeting, you had some feedback, and encouraged staff to look at listening to some of the public comments on the board composition and structure, which we've addressed. We've also worked on trying to keep what is a unique opportunity, recognizing that in Yountville, the town has started to take on greater roles and responsibilities in a lot of social and community structure, when other entities either don't do it. Case in point, our after-school program, the schools weren't doing that, so it's something we picked up. So, one of the things we've really worked on is trying to write a catch-all language that allows potential community initiatives, efforts done by other organizations, not necessarily now, but at some point in time, they may choose to come under the umbrella that we originally identified for the Town of Yountville Community Foundation. This foundation is premised on core services that generally are the towns involved with, including youth recreation, education support, community-based wellness enrichment programs, senior recreation, leisure, education, and support services, parks and facility improvements, cultural arts programs, such as our Public Art Walk, gallery at the community hall, literary programs, and then we have one section that would be initiatives for other activities and events. So, we've worked on restructuring the bylaws to try to better reflect that. And again, that's a optional discretionary component of organizations, I say initiatives, ideas that could come forward. More importantly, you asked that staff kind of identify what the transition might be with the Yountville School Foundation. Last time we discussed this, we talked about two potential paths, one of which is, you approve that you want us to go that way, we start the process for incorporating the nonprofit. The other was to work with an existing nonprofit that maybe could amend its bylaws and morph in, and that's exactly our morph into what this organization is. And I will have to fully disclaim that I am a board member for the Yountville School Foundation. I'm probably on over half the boards in the town of Yountville, along with some others. But at this point, we do have a representation from the Yountville School Foundation, but based on some very positive outcomes with the Napa Valley Unified School District, the core initiative that the Yountville School Foundation was established for has been achieved. The school district has indicated that Yountville Elementary School is not on the closure, and that was one of the primary focus of the group that was involved with the Yountville School Foundation. So, at this point in time, we do know that the preferred course of action, and the town attorney has been working with guiding myself, and the potential folks at the Yountville School Foundation, so we've identified a mechanism to go down that route, should the council choose to provide direction. So, I'm going to stop now and take questions, but you have the proposed bylaws that identified the core areas of what the Town of Yountville Community Foundation would be involved, the nature of the bylaws, the relationship to include partners, and we identified that there would be officio, staff members such who are not part of the, myself, and the Parks and Recreation Director would be ex officio. Town staff would be providing the financial, administrative, and the fiduciary activities with that. So, with that, I'll take any questions you might have, and...
Well, before you continue, since we're technically the applicant, I want to make sure I formally open the public hearing.
This is an administrative item, not a public...
That's right. We, I forgot, we moved it out of the public, or before the public hearing, so never mind. But I believe the vice mayor did have a disclosure he wanted to make.
Yes, and I think it's appropriate at this time, if not prior to this, to indicate that I am presently still the treasurer for the Yountville School Foundation, and will continue to serve on that board as it exists until such time as it does not, so...
So, there isn't a, there isn't a conflict there. Would there be a conflict if that foundation were to be a part of the community foundation going forward?
Well, I want to clarify...
For in terms of his ability to...
What's going to potentially happen, there's really, the action that the council's being asked to take tonight is twofold, one of which is to direct us to do so, and then second would be to authorize the town manager and town attorney to work with the principals of the Yountville School Foundation to transition that nonprofit into the Town of Yountville Community Foundation. At that point, Yountville School Foundation, as it's currently known, will cease to operate, and the council will then begin, will need to recruit for board members to serve on the Town of Yountville Community Foundation Board.
Understood, but I just want to make sure that, and I'm sure the vice mayor wants to make sure, that by participating in any approval at this stage, it doesn't create a conflict going forward.
No, there's no financial, I don't believe there's any material interest for myself or the, or the vice mayor with regards to this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, with that, any other questions of the staff report? I'll invite our member of the public that's here to speak on this issue tonight. Welcome back.
Thank you, Louis Chilton. I own property in Yountville, I'm not sure what to say to the address answer. I thought it was a fortunate timing that I was up in Yountville this week, as we've been discussing this over a long period of time, but as Steve did say, the school foundation was formed probably about six, seven years ago. We started the idea of putting together when the future of the school next door was truly in doubt. And I think that whole experience also brings to the fore why it would be good to have a more general community foundation that is supported by the town of Yountville. I'll use one example, where we now live, and my son, his elementary school is, he's in fifth grade, there are more students in his fifth grade of all the classes than there are at the entire school in Yountville. And when I tried not to get too involved there, but did ask, is there anything that people need help with, the PTA there said, "We've got it all covered off for this year," which I didn't complain about, I can assure you of that. But it kind of highlights to me, in Yountville, some of the challenges that exist, just because we are a small community, and we have a few people who do a whole lot of things. And for the, a community foundation to exist, which has the backing of a town from an administrative perspective, and the current treasurer, who tries to deal with the state of California, can tell, that's a lot of work and a lot of effort. So, to be able to take that off of a foundation, and have that support while still being independent, I think is very positive. As well, one of our concerns when we talked about kind of unwinding the school foundation was, well, someday we may be in this situation again, and we formed a 501(c)(3) because we had no vessel, if you wanted to talk about it, to deal with the school district or take donations, and that's why we founded it. And I think a general foundation still existing, if something were to occur next year, or 10 years down the road, will be able to address some of the issues that do exist. So, our goal, when I speak about goal being the Yountville School Foundation, was rather than just taking the 501(c)(3), which does take time, effort, fees to put together, if we could essentially repurpose it in a new organization, it would live on in a certain way. So, I can say, from everything I've heard, there's no doubt there's full support for this on the school foundation side. I've talked with Steve and Michael, just about the procedure, which is fairly simple, and it'll take a little bit on the state side. Our intention is, any remaining funds, or what we will do, provided that board approves it, I will not be presumptive, is we will donate the remaining funds that the school foundation raised for the benefit of the school to the school, and then can repurpose that foundation to the new one, if you all approve that. So, I certainly do encourage you to improve that. I think it would be good for the town, and we'll be able to survive for the long term. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public like to comment on this item?
And since the sheriffs are here, if you think you have a stop sign problem here, you should come to Southern California.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, is there any additional discussion by the council? If not, is there action to be made?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I think. Are we actually making a motion for this?
Recommending approval of the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 153319, establishing the Town of Yountville Community Foundation, and directing town manager and town attorney to take action necessary to establish the TOYCF.
I'll second.
Has anyone actually said that, or allowed to know that it doesn't, you know, sound like something that we don't want it to sound like? Okay.
Toys if?
Okay.
Sure, it's a Russian word.
Yeah.
So, motion by the vice mayor, was that second by the council member, Dornbecker? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, so that passes unanimously. Thank you. And so, the, just to be clear on the actions, you will now be tasked with outreach to organizations, including, but not exclusively, including the school foundation, to see if there is interest in participation.
We will do, remember, you will, under the bylaws, the council will be appointing the new board of directors, so we will do your targeted outreach. We have identified there's partner agencies, so for this case, initially, there'll be a park and rec advisory commission member, a arts commission member, if there are some other community groups that want to do something, and they do so early enough in the founding stages, that could be addressed in the screening. But more importantly, although the interim clerk's not going to like what I'll say, we will be starting the recruitment process to get the 529 members that are called for on the body. So, we will start with that. And then, I will be working simultaneously with the town attorney, and the representative from the Yountville School Foundation, to make that formal transition of the actual legal entity document. And then our staff, we will start work on our end, which will include an organizational meeting, because we'll need some organizational structure for the committee. The finance director will do internally, steps will be to move the art fund and the youth subsidy fund into the 501(c)(3), so those are the things that you will see happen based on the council's direction tonight.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to our public hearings. The first one related to adoption, thank you, Louis, for being in attendance, and sorry, but we're going to recognize that you're leaving now.
Thank you for the gentleman.
Next up, our first public hearing, urgency ordinance to regulate marijuana cultivation in dispensaries in advance of the statutory deadline by the state. Town attorney?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the sake of efficiency, I will sort of address this item and the following item together, because they obviously have a lot to do with each other. But basically, what we're looking at here is a sort of standard procedure for when the legislative body, in this case, the town council, is faced with a deadline, or an emergency, or some other urgency issue, and needs to both enact legislation quickly, but also wishes to consider more long-term legislation. And the first part of this is the urgency ordinance, and the second is the more permanent ordinance. So, as you know, a land use ordinance requires noticing before it can be adopted, it requires a first and second reading, and then it goes into effect 30 days after adoption on second reading. The most recent marijuana legislation passed, as I informed the council some meetings back, I can't remember exactly the date, has a deadline of March 1st for the effective date of cultivation land use ordinances, otherwise the state laws will take effect by default. So, that is the urgency under which we are operating, that we have to have something in place and effective prior to that March 1st deadline. Due to the normal noticing and first and second reading and effective date statutes, the standard ordinance procedure is going to be too late at this point. But the urgency ordinance will take effect immediately upon adoption, it does not require a first and second reading. What it requires is a four-fifths vote by the council, and findings of urgency. So, you'll see in these two ordinances, the urgency ordinance and the standard ordinance are very, very similar, if not identical, with the exception of the findings of urgency, which are contained in the urgency ordinance. And those essentially are the deadline I referenced earlier. So, the overall subject here is the regulation of marijuana dispensaries and cultivation within the town. And the first time we brought this to the council, I believe it was at the first meeting in December, we included a prohibition on cultivation, a prohibition on dispensaries, which is already in your code, and a prohibition on deliveries. And the reason for including the delivery prohibition is because, under the new state statutory scheme, if you don't affirmatively prohibit deliveries, they may be allowed under the future permitting scheme that goes into effect in a couple of years. They won't necessarily be allowed, but they might be, absent and express prohibition. So, we included that in the first draft, and the council's direction at that time was to remove the delivery prohibition, maybe pending further discussion, but for the time being, to not prohibit deliveries. So, the difference between what we presented first and this, is that we took the delivery prohibition out. Otherwise, it's basically the same ordinance that we brought back at the beginning of December. So, the urgency ordinance will, if you adopt it, will take effect immediately. And then, the more permanent ordinance, you can discuss, consider, make changes to, you can have your first and second reading, and when it goes into effect, the first thing it does is it repeals the urgency ordinance. So, the practical effect is, if you were to adopt both without change, a seamless continuation of the law. But the important thing to know is that the urgency ordinance is temporary, it exists to help us meet that statutory deadline, so the town can preserve its land use authority, and then pending the actual adoption of a more permanent ordinance about marijuana cultivation, dispensaries, and delivery, if you wish to revisit that issue. So, as rambling as that might have been, that in a nutshell is what we're looking at here. The first item is the urgency ordinance, and then the second item, a separate item, is the more permanent marijuana ordinance. With that, I'm happy to answer questions about the procedure or the substance.
And again, as I tried to do earlier on the non-public hearing, I do want to formally open the public hearing, so this discussion, being, we being the applicant, per se, is part of the public hearing itself.
If I may, the one, one thing I forgot to mention right at the outset, is that after posting the agenda, it was brought to my attention, there was a typo in the version of the ordinance, both the urgency ordinance and the permanent one, that was posted online, and so I've given the council updated versions, and so the public is aware for full disclosure purposes, references to deliveries that were, that remained in the recitals have been removed. I don't know if we just went offline there, but there was a flash.
No, we're going to keep going unless Jeremy comes out and says we're off.
So, that is the one difference between what was posted online and in Granicus, and what's in front of you. It's a minor change, it's what we might call a scrivener's error, but basically a typo of a word.
And I'll ask the first question. This is in response specifically to the deadline set by state legislation regarding cultivation. The reason we can continue the discussion on deliveries is that that, the deadline does not pertain to deliveries, in the sense of, if we don't prohibit it now, we lose all of our local authority on that, whereas if we don't act on the cultivation piece prior to the deadline you just described, we would lose local control over the cultivation piece.
That's correct. So, under the, its official title is the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, as it's currently written, if the town does not regulate cultivation effective March 1st, so that is adopted first, second reading passed, if you do the normal method, if you don't have something in place by March 1st, then the town loses all ability thereafter to regulate cultivation. The same deadline and prohibition, or preemption, does not apply to delivery. Delivery will be allowed unless you prohibit it, when those permits start being... Delivery will be allowed unless you prohibit it when those permits start being issued, which the state guesses is 2018. But basically, that's dependent on a state scheme of permit issuance, and any time after those start rolling out, you could prohibit delivery and stop the delivery of marijuana into the town if you felt that was something you wanted to do. That door is wide open to legislation.
And even though there's a cleanup bill that is moving forward that would remove the deadline, it's not signed until it's signed, and so, the deadline is in effect until it's officially not in effect.
That's correct. From my perspective, the law is what it is until it changes. And just as a side note, my understanding, following the cleanup legislation, is that it has been compromised by a number of riders from various sides of the marijuana issue, which have complicated the bill significantly. And what I mean by that is that some of your local control over cultivation is the subject of amendments that go along with repealing the deadline. So, some folks have added language that not only repeals the deadline, but limits somewhat your ability to regulate cultivation. And so, those have complicated the committee process, and the author of the bill, as I understand it, completely pulled it from the procedure based on those amendments, because they seem to undermine local control, and the whole point of that legislation was to give more local control. So, as usual, we can't count on the legislature doing something clean and simple like removing that deadline, we're going to have to assume it's going to be there until they remove it.
Right, thank you. Any other questions about the presentation on the first of these two related items? Any members of the public like to comment?
Hi, my name is Carrie Dorman, I'm a resident of Yountville. I would like a clarification, because my original comment was that the ordinance as proposed uses the term "delivery" or "deliveries" in a number of places. And I do understand from the town attorney that it has been taken out of the recitals, but if my memory is correct, I believe it also is used in the actual substance of the ordinance, where it says numbers one and two are the prohibited items. I think "deliveries" is used there also.
Thank you. Town Attorney?
So, what I believe she's referring to is Section 2, Marijuana Cultivation and Dispensaries Prohibited. Number 1 says marijuana cultivation is prohibited, number 2 says marijuana dispensaries or any other facility or use which involves the manufacture, cultivation, or distribution of drugs or other substances which it is illegal to distribute or possess under state or federal law. This prohibition refers to facilities or uses. So, a dispensary or a use of the property would be prohibited from essentially distributing, selling, handing out marijuana of any kind. This would still allow for a delivery from a facility or use outside of the town limits. So, this is specifically limited to physical presences within the town.
It's a land use issue within the town, a dispensary could not distribute within the town because they're prohibited.
A dispensary operating within the town.
Correct.
But a dispensary operating outside the town could theoretically still deliver without violating this ordinance. I should point out, though, that until those permits go into effect, I do not think it is actually legal for a dispensary to deliver marijuana. I think that that is something that's legal with a permit, once those permits are issued. But currently, the law has its own way of dealing with people who drive with marijuana, and I think you either have to be a patient or a qualified caregiver, but I leave that to dispensaries to consult their own legal counsel about what's lawful and what isn't. But I believe that this would allow a dispensary with a lawful permit, when and if they're issued, to deliver, without violating this particular language.
And I think it was to the Vice Mayor's point that caused our discussion and the change to the original language, which was, we did not, I think, the, at least the majority, if not the entire council, agreed with the point, that we were not looking to overly burden someone who had legitimate recommendation of medical use of marijuana, and so, and because you identified the fact that the delivery component was not under the same deadline as the cultivation piece, that we can evaluate that going forward.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, if actual dispensaries are prohibited in the town of Yountville, which we have already done, and then, it seems a moot point, you know, a number two, that marijuana dispensaries or any other facility, as you're saying, within the town limits. We've already said, no, we're not going to have any.
Well, this is certainly an additional prohibition to what you already have. So, you already do have a prohibition in place, this is adding to it and clarifying a little bit more what exactly we mean by that. This language also is intended to cover what I might call a mobile dispensary, which is distinct from a delivery, in that, to me, it would be a facility or use, just like a mobile food vendor is. It would prevent that type of an activity as well, which I think is an important clarification to make before it actually comes.
I see.
So, this is a little bit of cleanup as well.
I see.
One other question, I seem to recall that it came up in our earlier discussion, how this may relate or not to residents of the town of Yountville who live at the veterans' home, which is a state facility. Are you prepared to speak to whether this impacts the status of those residents?
Yes, we, I have to say, I don't think that our land use regulations in general reach the veterans' home. So, it is my understanding that this will not impact their activities or lifestyle at the veterans' home itself.
They're already under their own jurisdiction and restrictions as it relates to this and any other activities.
That's my understanding.
Okay. So, any other questions? I think we've had our public comment, I'll close the public hearing and invite action by the council. Is there a motion to be had on the first item, the urgency ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve, I'm sure I'm going to get the number wrong, ordinance number 15xxxU, an urgency ordinance of the town of Yountville prohibiting the cultivation of marijuana and marijuana dispensaries.
I think we should have a number, shouldn't we? Or do we not?
Triple X seems a little...
Yeah, those are intended to be placeholders, but we could give it number 001U. I don't know if you have...
Well, 601 is on the agenda, but that's not necessary.
Is the ordering nomenclature the...
So, it would be 16-446.
As noted.
16-446, because we have a 444 and a 445 coming up. All right, so 16-446 is the motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that as clear as we need it for the record? Okay.
I'll second.
Councilmember Dornbecker, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the urgency ordinance passes by more than a four fifths, with actually unanimous vote. So, the related item is our next public hearing, introduction and waiving of the reading of "To amend the municipal code to regulate marijuana dispensaries and cultivation." Is there further staff report, or all?
The only note I might make on this is that now that you have the urgency ordinance in place, this ordinance you can deliberate on and discuss and postpone and bring back as, a little bit, with a little bit more freedom, now that you have the urgency ordinance in place. So, if you want to make changes to this, if you want to tinker with it, if you want to consider it a little further, you're not under the same deadline you were when we first brought this up in December. So, that's the only note I might make, is that you've met your deadline, now you can treat this like any other ordinance and take your time, or make an action if you're ready to make an action.
Well, I think we could certainly, first of all, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item.
If I can, before you open it. I have a question.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, Vice Mayor, question?
Thank you. So, what precludes any agency from issuing an urgency ordinance if they want to get around the 30-day notice period?
You have to make findings of the need.
There has to be a finding of a need.
Yeah, which are included in the urgency ordinance you just passed.
Correct.
And in this case, the urgency was to regulate the activity, which is potentially injurious to the public, prior to the deadline, at which point you would lose the ability to regulate. So, that's your urgency. Of course, over time, that urgency may be more and more difficult to justify, so you do want to, at some point, make a permanent ordinance, and that's what this is about. But you do have a little more time. But yes, you need to make those findings, and you need a four fifths vote.
Okay, so it's those two conditions, there have to be specific findings, they can't necessarily be capricious, or...
That's right.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
So, getting back to this item, I just want to state now, so it's not forgotten, in the ordinance that we are considering now, the very first item does not have the ordinance number, so let's make sure that's now 16-446-U. This ordinance would be repealing that previous action that we just took.
Just one I will point out, the original ones had their number, and when the attorney reprinted them off that, if you look on your agenda, the agenda actually references the number, so we'll cut that off.
It doesn't for the urgency ordinance, though, Steve. The others have numbers, but the...
The others do, yes, but not the urgency.
No, it shows here, but we'll work through.
The numbers on the left are not the ordinance numbers.
Ah.
The blue numbers.
Thank you, thank you, all right.
So, I want to make sure the public hearing is officially open, if it hasn't already been. I'll invite any public comments, since the applicant is us, and we've already brought that forward. Seeing no members of the public coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion and potential action by the council. Comments from the council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
No, I was just, for a point of clarification, then, would the ordinance number be 16-446 or 16-444?
That was the, that was the one we already did.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, yes.
16-444 is the action that we're discussing.
That is the right one, because that's the one where we brought that.
I see. So, I would just, I'm ready to make a motion.
Feel free.
I move that we approve ordinance number 16-444, an ordinance of the town of Yountville amending Chapter 17.18, prohibited uses of the Yountville Municipal Code.
And I believe we're actually introducing and waiving the reading, as opposed to...
I'm sorry, introducing and waiving the reading.
So, is that motion clear? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Vice Mayor, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous, and it is passed, so, just so that we're all clear, that, assuming that we go to a second reading and it's approved, that will take effect after the deadline, which is why we have the urgency ordinance to take care of us between now and then.
Right.
That's right.
Very good. Thank you, Town Attorney, for clarifying a fairly complex set of circumstances. Next up, introduction and consideration of an ordinance amending our sign municipal code.
So, this has been discussed here before, but the, this is, the reason for this ordinance is probably twofold. One is part of my ongoing process of looking through the town's codes and finding things to update or clean up, or make suggested changes. My looking at this section was prompted by a recent Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court decision about sign ordinances. And it made very, very clear some First Amendment rules and restrictions on our ability to regulate signs and other expressive conduct. And in response to that case, we took a close look at the town's ordinance and made the changes that are suggested in this ordinance. The council asked us to take those first to the ZDRB, the Zoning Design Review Board, and we did. We took it to the board on two different meetings, got some great feedback, had a lot of good discussions, and I think the most important thing to communicate back to the council is that these changes, what's in front of you now, are a temporary fix intended to bring the code in compliance with the more recent decisions of the Supreme Court on this area of constitutional law, and that staff and the ZDRB is committed to pursuing, on a more long-term basis, a more fundamental overhaul of the code, to rethink what exactly the town's needs and purposes are in a sign code, to get rid of some stuff that maybe has been hanging around for a long time, that nobody uses or needs anymore in terms of enforcement tools, and to generally approach the subject from a fresh perspective. That's going to take a little bit of time. So, this is in front of you now, to make sure that we're compliant in the meantime, and then, staff and the board will go back and bring a more comprehensive update at a later time. So, I recognized today, when reviewing the agenda packet, that you have a clean version of the proposed ordinance, and what we provided to you here at the meeting, and it's available to the public as well, if they want to review it, is a red line, which might give you a more detailed view of what exact changes were made, what language was struck, what language was changed. But you'll see primarily, the theme here is to avoid content-based restrictions and definitions. So, in a nutshell, that means a definition or a prohibition that depends upon the content of the sign has now been removed, and it instead has been linked to a use on the property in question. That's the short version of what we did here. And I'd be happy to go into detail about how that works, if you like, but I'll leave it to you to request that level of lecturing.
Well, that level is rather extensive, now that we have the red line copy here to see the significant language changes that have been made.
That's true. However, I should note that, for the most part, what we did is attempt to preserve as much as possible of your existing code. So, almost all of the types of signs and prohibitions and restrictions and sizes and shape restrictions and that sort of thing, that's been preserved as much as possible. What's been changed is the definitions that depend upon the content of the sign. So, to the greatest extent possible, we tried to preserve your code. That's the short version of that.
Right. Again, I'll formally open the public hearing, invite members of the public to comment on this item. Here's coming back up. We're going to make you sit up in the front row, if you're going to keep coming up like this.
No, this is my only workout. So, I'm here both as a resident of the town and as a member of the town's ZDRB, and I have never played a lawyer on TV. I am still a lawyer in Texas, I am not a lawyer in California, so I'm not here giving any legal advice. But my takeaway from the zoning and design review board meetings is, we have been especially interested in the proposed changes to Section 17.92.110, which is design criteria, and in particular, the proposed Section A. We have had a number of discussions with this, with the town attorney, and both in open and closed session. I won't go into anything that was said in closed session, but...
Actually, just before you keep going, I hear a ruffling of page, page 19 of 24 is the section.
Oh, sorry, I only took a snapshot on my iPad.
That's okay, go ahead.
So, and I have talked briefly to the town attorney about this. In my travels of trying to figure out what we might and could do, along with my other board members, I found a Ninth Circuit case out of the city of Lake Oswego, which I guess is in Oregon, but it's still the Ninth Circuit, which governs us. And it talks about whether or not color and things like that can be regulated without constitutional violation. And some of the things the case says, the bottom line is, says the city is not oblig- the statute reads, let me just read you the statute first. Signs shall be designed to be compatible with other nearby signs, other elements of street and site furniture, and with adjacent structures. Compatibility shall be determined by the relationships of the elements of form, proportion, scale, color, materials, surface treatment, overall sign size, and the size and style of lettering. That's from the Lake Oswego Sign Code. And as nearly as I can tell, that is what was in effect when this case was decided in 2006. And the court held that that kind of language was acceptable. I think I am speaking appropriately for my colleagues on the ZDRB when I say that something like that, if it can be done, is more what we would prefer, even as the temporary fix. Because I personally have a concern that if our temporary fix goes this way, and our final fix goes that way, we have something that's happened during the temporary time period that may not be permanently acceptable. So, I'm... So I'm just trying to hope all the pieces can fit together, as Mike said before, in a seamless way. So I would just ask for maybe something around more compatible, that kind of language.
Thank you. Any other public comment? So I'll invite our town attorney to make a comment about that statement.
So we did discuss this subject quite a bit, actually, and that Ninth Circuit case is an interesting and important case. There is quite a bit of Supreme Court language that suggests that you must have a much more specific criteria in order to approve or deny a sign permit. So to the extent that we can try to craft some language that we think satisfies the Supreme Court's writings on this subject, and the town's need to have some flexibility and discretion, it's going to be, I think, a longer-term project to find that language that's going to work, and it's not something that can be arrived at relatively quickly. I do agree, we probably can find something that gives the town, and more specifically the ZDRB, some level of guided discretion, but I would hesitate to follow the Lake Oswego model exactly as it's written. I recognize that that case is out there, but without going into too much detail, there are cases from the Supreme Court, which of course takes precedence over the Ninth Circuit, that I think are maybe inconsistent with that holding from the Lake Oswego case. So I think at this point, it's a little bit difficult to engage in that process on a short-term basis, and that is absolutely going to be part of our long-term discussion with the ZDRB and the town council and planning staff. It just didn't quite fit into the more urgent need to get something done to the town's code in the meantime. I don't know if that answers the question really, but it's a much more difficult question than it seems at first.
So more specific direction could be more challengeable, is that generally what you're saying?
Let me back it up. The issue here is not actually going to be content-based restrictions. That's what the more recent case was about. What we're looking at with respect to the 110 section, design criteria, and the discretion of the design review board, is that under the First Amendment, you can't have open-ended discretion to decision-makers to approve or deny communication. And the sort of absurd example of this is that you have the Girl Scouts coming and saying, "We have a sign of this size saying we want to sell cookies," and you say, "That's great, go forth and sell cookies." You're approved. And then the Ku Klux Klan comes and has a hateful message, and you say, "Oh, no, we don't really like the color or the design of your sign, it doesn't fit aesthetically with our town." And so what really is happening there is that the decision-maker is using, and I'm not saying this would happen here, but this is what the Supreme Court says is the problem, if you have unbounded discretion given to a permit issuance body, they can disguise the effort to censor speech in aesthetics. So the answer to this, according to the Supreme Court, is you must have objective, definite, concrete standards, to which you can point and say, "These are the approved designs, these are the approved colors, these are the approved sizes, this is the approved materials. You can say whatever you want, as long as it meets these standards." Somewhere between those is the effort to have some kind of a guided discretion, and that's what Lake Oswego is about, is saying, "We're not going to say specifically what your design has to look like, but it has to be compatible with surrounding design, surrounding signs, surrounding property uses." It's still a little subjective, to my eye, to say that this is compatible and this is not compatible, but the Ninth Circuit felt like it was definite enough. The Supreme Court has said in some instances it needs to be concrete and objective. So this is why it's a more complicated question than just sort of adopting something that's been approved before. The United States Supreme Court has had a slightly different take on it, and that's the one that we're really focused on, trying to figure out what it is that they would approve or not approve. So that's sort of a five-minute exploration of some very, very subtle and complicated First Amendment issues, but we will revisit them for sure, but I'm trying to explain why it's something we couldn't do quickly in a couple of ZDRB meetings.
Fair enough.
It is on our radar, though, and we're working on it very hard.
Thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Dornbecker, did you have a comment?
I do, and that is that my perception of the Lake Oswego ordinance that was read to us is very similar to what we have in that the colors must be selected from an approved color palette, which is sort of, I don't know, to me, they're very, very similar.
Adopting a specific palette or referencing specific colors used in a building to which the sign is attached, something to that effect, is much more definite than Lake Oswego's approach. Their approach looks for a finding of, quote, "compatibility," unquote.
I see.
And that's where I am a little bit suspicious of the subjective nature of the finding. It's less subjective than what the town's current code allows, the Oswego version is, but it's, I think, more subjective than what I would recommend.
Thank you.
Other questions?
The only design criteria we're talking about is color here. There's no other design criteria.
In the current code?
In the one I have in front of me.
In the proposed one, that's right, and that's by design, and I don't mean to mix up terms. That was by intention, to try to find something concrete and definite that we can point to in terms of criteria, in terms of making a finding by the permit issuance body, the We struggled with a few other options, like shapes or some other objective criteria we could point to, and this was the most I felt sort of comfortable recommending. Again, this is why it would be a longer-term process to try to come up with a solution that gives more discretion or more options in terms of what criteria to apply.
So all were, throughout the ordinance, in another part of the ordinance, we state what the size of the sign can be...
Yes.
Based on the size of the walls and the size of the building?
Yes, I should, so the overall dimensions and construction and location and all of the other specifics of the sign would be spelled out in other sections of the ordinance. This was the, if you will, the aesthetic or the design area involves color. The shape and size of it, yeah, are governed by the type of use on the property and the other provisions of the code.
Right, and so just to clarify, the other part of the ordinance states the location and the size. It doesn't state the shape, the elements that can be used in it, and then this design section only states color.
Right, and you could, I suppose, add to that materials, to the extent that they're not already included elsewhere, but that's right. This only references color for the time being.
Okay.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Mueller, anything? Okay, I can't remember if we're still in a public hearing, I think, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to close that and invite action by the council. Is there action to be had on this item? And I did, it's been brought to my attention, the electronic version of the ordinance does not have the number in the title, but it is 16-445.
That's good.
Councilmember Mueller?
Would you like a motion?
If you are ready to present one, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 16-445.
Introducing, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. An ordinance of the town of Yountville amending chapter 17.92, signs of the Yountville municipal code, and I'm going to introduce and waive the reading.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, thank you, that passes. And Carrie, thank you for bringing forward that concern that's been discussed, and I appreciate that we were able to have some clarifying discussion about that, that there is much more to be done going forward.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. Okay, now we're moving on to our fourth and final public hearing, as it relates to master development plan amendment with Hotel Yountville.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Tonight you have before you a master development plan amendment, including design review amendment and use permit amendment, for Hotel Yountville to open selected facilities to the public, and these facilities would include the Y Bar Lounge, the Hopper Creek Kitchen Restaurant, and Spa Aqua, and these facilities are currently open and available only to hotel guests under the approved permits, and the application before you tonight is only to open these facilities, the other hotel facilities would remain available to guests only, and that includes the pool and the related, the deck and the pool bar, as well as the exercise room and all other grounds. So starting with the Y Bar, it is located at the hotel entrance, at the lobby adjacent to the registration area, and it consists of a typical bar with six seats, as well as the lounge area that contains 26 seats, and the outdoor terrace that contains about 34 seats. And it's available to guests for beer or wine and drinks, as well as small bites, similar to a cocktail menu. And it's currently open from April through mid-November, from 5:00 p.m. daily until midnight, and then from mid-November through March, it's generally open from noon to midnight, and that's because during that part of the year, the pool bar is closed. Under this application, the applicant would seek to extend the hours of operation until 1:00 a.m. And the goal is to create a real comfortable lounge environment, where you could go and have drinks and grab a bite to eat, there would be low background music, a just real comfortable place to grab a drink. The applicant indicates that the change in model to be open to the public would require an additional bartender during the busiest times, and up to two new servers on overlapping shifts. The menu of small bites is not really expected to change significantly, although it may have some fine-tuning to it. Additionally, the applicant is seeking to make some minor design modifications to the outdoor terrace, and this is to allow use of the outdoor area in inclement weather and to make it more comfy and cozy. One is to install a cover on the trellis, and this would lay flat upon that trellis, it wouldn't introduce new massing, it doesn't contribute to site FAR, and the other change is to add a new outdoor bar at the west side of the terrace, closest to Washington Street, and this too would be minor, it's on the scale of a bar about eight to 10 feet in length with six bar stools, so we're considering this minor and incidental and consistent with the design ordinance. Moving on, the Hopper Creek Restaurant Kitchen is another facility they would like to open to the public. When originally approved, it was really presented as a dining facility for guests, and it's open for breakfast and lunch from 7:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m., and an all-day dining menu is available until 5:00. It is closed for the dinner hour, but the kitchen itself is open because the hotel serves room service all day long and into the evening until 9:30. So the change would allow the Hopper Creek Kitchen to be open for dinner between 5:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., and this would result in a change in staff of up to four or five new waitstaff, one hostess, two waiters, and one back waiter. No changes to the kitchen staff are necessary, since it's already open for room service, and the applicant indicates that that staff can, would be able to serve the dinner service as well. And that's what you're looking at with the restaurant. The spa is located opposite the restaurant, on the other side of the pool, and it has six treatment rooms and manicure/pedicure room, men's and women's locker rooms, and a small boutique, and this layout isn't going to change. It is open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., and there are no changes proposed there, and the applicant additionally doesn't expect new employees, although they would work with on-call therapists for reservations to come in 30 minutes before a treatment and leave 30 minutes after a treatment. So the main impact of opening the hotel's facilities to the public would obviously be on parking, there would be new employees that need to be served, as well as new guests, and that number could be significant based on the area of the spaces and the number of seats available. So we have calculated the parking demand on the municipal code standards for parking, and we estimate that by expanding the use to be open to the public would require an additional 55 spaces, and that's for the parking demand of each of the individual uses, and I'll just quickly go through those. For the bar, it's calculated at one parking space for the building occupancy of three, and occupancy is based on one person for every 15 square feet. The restaurant parking standard is one parking space for every three restaurant seats, and the spa parking standard is based on a retail or personal services standard of one space for every 250 square feet. And that gives us a number that we have then reduced by 25% because it's a shared-use facility, and the overlapping nature of those uses means that there is less of an overall parking demand. So when we look at existing spaces in the parking lot, the applicant indicates there are 89, and yet when you look at the minimum parking space is necessary for the hotel itself, it is a minimum of 91. And when the spa was approved, there was an additional number, and there has been, the parking lot was designed to accommodate these spaces, and they've either been, the stalls have not been painted, or they've been removed for use of hotel housekeeping's golf carts, or in the case of the largest suite, it's the four spaces adjacent to that is marked with a reserve sign, and staff observe these modifications as part of this permit and part of the normal use monitoring of the use. So this application presents an opportunity to correct that, to regain the deficiency of two that we're facing, and then also address all the additional spaces for the use. And I do want to comment that we have taken a very conservative approach to requiring parking, and it's the minimum necessary for all the shared uses. The applicant has submitted a parking study where the traffic consultant indicates that, in her opinion, there's an alternate mode of evaluating that, but our code does not have a ratio or a standard to determine how we could calculate the additional needs. So we're falling back on what we call worst-case scenario, if this was a popular destination for a bar, a restaurant, and a spa, what would be required. So in staff's opinion, the minimum number of parking spaces required would be 57, and we have been working with the applicant to provide spaces in addition to the lot, and there's an opportunity on Champagne Drive to gain an additional eight spaces, and we believe that the hotel should be able to take a reduction for those, since that is a private street, and they haven't been conditioned to have those spaces, and yet they'll serve their parking needs. So that leaves a deficiency of 47 spaces that we need to address if there's really any merit or justification in opening this use to the public and not having that parking burden wind up on the streets. And so the applicant has been in the early discussions with the town manager and an ad hoc committee of the council as to the opportunity to build a lot to satisfy this demand, and early engineering models of that lot are that it could take 41 to 47 spaces, and if those were indeed constructed and allocated for this use, that would go toward meeting the parking demand. And in order to manage this newer model of providing parking, staff has suggested a parking management plan similar to other businesses in town, with the elements that are outlined in the staff report and also in the conditions of approval, and those are that the employer shall submit a list of license plates for all employees, and that this shall be updated annually or upon change of employee employment or vehicle, that the 10 management employees that are already currently required to park on-site by resolution shall continue to do so, that they shall not park on the city streets, that each employee monitored, registered in the program will have a parking... that each employee monitored, registered in the program will have a parking sticker to identify their vehicle, and that they'll be required to park in approved parking zones. That would be the parking lot on Washington Street, south of Champagne Drive, on Champagne Drive, or in other approved locations. But that there is a new prohibited parking zone, and that would be Washington Street from California to Champagne, in order to make that busy area available to users of the park, but also the additional guests that we're hoping would use these new facilities. So, as indicated in the staff report, parking is our main issue, but we believe that should agreement be made on constructing a parking lot to accommodate this need, that it would go toward mitigating that issue. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant is here, too, to give a presentation and answer questions.
Right. Questions in the staff report?
Well, I just have one. And that is, so, if the applicant and the town do reach an agreement and they build that parking lot, that parking lot essentially doesn't serve the rest of the town. It only serves the hotel. Is that correct?
No, the terms of the agreement would be that 20 or so spaces would be open to the public, that the others would be marked for use by hotel guests. So, it would still be a shared lot, and not for the exclusive use of the hotel.
So, I thought I understood you to say that the lot could accommodate 47 spaces. Is that correct?
Up to that, yes.
Up to that. But that's sort of what they need, isn't it?
So, I caution the discussion to not include an item that we're not actually addressing tonight.
Oh.
Because it's up to the applicant to come up with a parking management plan. They may come up with a plan that doesn't even include building a parking lot.
I see.
That's unlikely, but it is possible. It's feasible. So, I ask that we keep the discussion related to this. If there is an approval of this item as presented tonight, it doesn't take effect unless they come up with the parking solution.
I see.
So, is that a fair way to put it, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay. Any other questions at this point? Councilmember Durham, Councilmember Mueller, question? Vice Mayor?
I'm good for now.
So, I do have a couple of questions. If you could run back over the existing hotel parking deficiencies, you mentioned something about reserved spaces for a suite, and housekeeping was using spaces that could actually be used for guest parking. Is that?
Right. What we observed is that in the older lot, there were two spaces that were removed from guest parking, and those two are used for the golf carts. And that in the newer portion of the lot, there were four parallel spaces adjacent to the suite that had had the parking tees removed, and there was a reserved parking sticker. So, I guess the assumption is that the suite would park one vehicle there, but then the other three are probably not being used for that use. So, there is a deficiency.
And are you recommending in your report that those return to individual vehicle parking spaces, all of them, for guest use?
Not necessarily. If we have an ability to obtain the number of spaces that are needed under the parking standards that have been recalc'd for the property.
And that includes a potential off-site solution to roughly 40-something spaces, eight additional on Champagne Drive?
Yes.
And is, in your calculations, is there any inclusion in, I'm assuming there's no inclusion of the public street parking that's new and added to the south part of California along, so if it's public parking, you don't calculate that at all into what they're required to provide?
Correct.
And one of the other uses we've talked about with other businesses is tandem parking. Have you analyzed the ability to do that anywhere in the existing parking areas on-site that might be a mitigation to what they need?
Well, a cursory view of how the parking lot is laid out, it doesn't look like that's possible. What we do have at Hotel Yountville are the 10 employee spaces that are on, the 10 management employees that are parking on-site, and we feel that goes a long way to meeting the standard when we're talking about 90 spaces in total.
In the same vein, Mr. Mayor, that you're talking for the council, and it sort of reflects Councilmember Dornbecker's comment earlier, I want everybody to remember when Planning Director Liston talks about the number of parking, that includes all sources, that includes the guests and the employees. So, when we talk about that, you know, a practical expectation, maybe we're shifting employees further south, but we're there opening closer proximity. So, that number reflects what we anticipate those of us residents and others that may be coming to go to the lounge or to the spa is also providing adequate parking for them. So, I just want to make sure that we're not fixating solely on employee parking because that total number is a distributed number under our parking code. Our parking code is an aggregate of anybody associated with the use.
All right. Going to the drawing set, Sandra, my question's going to pertain to the request for outdoor patio bar activity, but a restriction on that public activity accessing the pool area. I believe you said that.
Uh huh.
But those two uses are almost immediately adjacent. Is there?
No.
I'm looking at page four or five, the outdoor, Hopper Creek outdoor dining area.
Oh, right, the dining area. I'm sorry, I thought you meant the bar.
But isn't that where the outdoor bar is being proposed?
No, the bar is just off the lobby. It's separated from the restaurant by a parking lot and several in-units.
It's the upper left, up here as well.
Yeah, I could stand up here and show you.
So, this is the entry in the lobby, the reception, the indoor bar and the outdoor bar.
Got it. I got you. Okay. I was just looking, okay, I was confusing patios. Okay, so, my general question was going to be, are you concerned that there is adequate separation of activity? But if this is going to be off the different portion of the building, then that's a non-issue now. So, they're not looking to add anything outside the outdoor dining space of the kid, the restaurant, other than the described uses of the restaurant and the hours going into the evening?
Correct.
Okay. Then that satisfies my question. Thank you. I know we do have the applicant here. I'll invite the applicant up to present, and if I didn't say it, I'm going to formally open the public hearing and invite you to speak.
Thank you. Good evening.
You're welcome.
I'd first of all like to thank everyone for their support last time around on our exercise room. It's, we've pulled the permits, right, Joe? We've got the permits, and we're ready to go. So, we're hoping to have that open by the springtime. So, we really appreciate the support there. I'd add a couple of things, I guess, to what Sandra said in her report. There are a variety of reasons we're looking to do this. One is obviously to maximize the use of the property, and from a financial perspective, we think this is a good thing to do. And maybe more importantly is that we feel what we're trying to do is fill maybe a bit of a void that doesn't exist here in Yountville from an experience perspective. And I'll talk about that in a minute. And the third reason really is that we feel that doing this is going to make the hotel, our hotel, Yountville, more competitive, but also make Yountville as a town more competitive. And I'll discuss that in a minute. But the Y-Bar is an area, and a lot of you maybe have not been to the hotel because we're obviously not open to the public, but it's an incredibly beautiful setting, and we want to create more of a sophisticated lounge-type environment where people can come prior to dinner, have a drink, go to dinner, and others to come back after dinner, a place to sit and have drinks and cocktails. There's really nothing like it that exists in Yountville. So, we'd like to try to create something like that. It'd be very low-key, but seating areas where people can talk privately in groups and gather. We really don't have anything like that in Yountville. Our guests, current guests, are the only ones that use it, and they have great experience. And we think locals would have a great experience there, as well as other guests staying in other hotels, as well as our own hotel guests. So, we feel that that would be a really great atmosphere to sit inside or out, and would enhance what Yountville has to offer. The Hopper Creek Kitchen is a place where we focus primarily on breakfast, breakfast service. It's kind of, again, unique, one-of-a-kind in Yountville. We get a lot of requests for people to have breakfast there. We decline them. We tell them we're not open to the public. But, and that's local people living in Yountville, as well as other guests staying in other hotels. So, we feel that restaurant could be something, again, unique to what Yountville has to offer. And again, we're not open in the evening, but opening it would add yet another unique element to what Yountville has to offer. The spa is a small spa. It's very intimate kind of an experience. We specialize in couples' treatments, and our guests are, we get some of the highest guest satisfaction scores out of our spa. It's a really unique experience. So, we also feel that people staying in other hotels or local residents would like to enjoy it as well. But as Sandra said, it does not include the use of the pool deck area or the pool bar. It's just exclusive to the, exclusive to the spa itself. The, just to address a little bit of the parking situation, we know this parking is a bit of an issue, and we feel some kind of cooperation with building that lot at the south part of town will not only enhance the south part of the town, but will also really kind of fix a lot of parking problems in that area. So, that's why we're seeking the approval of this. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? And just to clarify, as I stated when Councilmember Dornbecker brought it up, that parking lot is a separate issue, the off-site parking lot. It's a likely or possible solution to your deficiency, but it's not something that we're addressing directly, at least tonight. So, just to make that clarification.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public audience like to comment? Now, you got enough exercise for tonight, Carrie? Okay. 10,000 steps. Seeing no other public comment, I'll close the public hearing and invite deliberation and potential action by the council. Who would like to go first? Vice Mayor?
Sure. You know, this is a unique property, and it's, I mean, obviously, it's the largest commercial property we have on the south end of town. And I've always wondered to myself, and not having necessarily all the foresight of the original master development plan and why it was structured the way it was, although I, we've had our challenges in the past, but that, you know, that's the past. This is, it's an incredible asset, and I've always wondered why there hasn't been public access. I've been fortunate enough to be in that Y Lounge because I had a friend stay at the hotel, and I've been out there for cocktails, and probably shouldn't admit that out loud, but it is a nice space. You know, aside from the parking deficiency, which we'll have to come up with a plan that will be able to support it, you know, the south end of town doesn't have commercial environment, commercial activity. This would be sort of an interesting way to bring that together, especially since we do use the park quite a bit, and there may be an opportunity for people to pop across the street and have a beverage, or even grab a bite to eat if they're down the south end of town, rather than necessarily walking or taking the trolley back up. But, I mean, I don't have particular issue with any of the requests, per se. I think it's, you know, these businesses have to evolve, and we're getting into a much more competitive marketplace in Napa County, and so, for the property to be able to continue to be competitive, having that access, I think, is something that I would be open to, and I think is consistent with what the use of the property ultimately would be. It's how we attenuate the issues around that many deficient spaces. And not talking about the potential parking space on the south end of town, we'd still be deficient, six spaces. So, there's a dialogue that would have to occur around that, I believe, if my math was correct. But since we're not including that in this dialogue, that would be my only comments at this time.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak next? Councilmember Mueller, are you ready?
Yeah, I think that, I'm not going to even speak on that extra lot right now, but I remember when the spa kind of came up, there was a lot of discussion at the council, December 2nd, 2008. I remember it quite well. It was my very first meeting. And there was people in the audience, and a lot of people in the council really thought it should be open, and perhaps things, you know, have changed since then. I'm not really certain because, you know, maybe, I don't really know why you're coming up with opening these uses now when you didn't want to open them up before, because there was a lot of public demand. And I guess, to my point, I think that the parking, even though you gave them a 25% discount for shared use, I'd like to see when that actually comes back. I think that there would be a lot of locals going there to some extent, or people who are already in town. And I'd like to see, there's been certainly studies done, talking about that, so I'd like to see a little more information about what you'd project, because I think projections can be made in terms of, you know, the real parking requirements. I certainly don't like hearing at all that every time we go over there, it's like peeling back, you know, layers of the onion. Oh, look, these four spaces are gone. Oh, look, this is over here. So, I'm in favor of opening this to the public, but I still think that there's, I don't know if we're going to need more oversight over that property. I mean, I certainly think that if we approve something, and it's in the recitals, and it's in the resolution, and then to find that there's this drift over time, that's what really keeps troubling me. And, you know, I'm really willing to work with the applicant when, you know, they find, oh, we didn't want to open it a while ago, and now we want to open it, so I'm going to support this resolution. But again, I don't like this continued drift in these changes. Oh, no, we can't do that, but now we have to do this. And I am concerned about that. But I am flexible when it comes down to the parking, to really get, try to get some assessment of how many people that are already parked in town, whether you're parked in your garage or you're parked at another property, may be using that. You could probably put the onus shared with the town and the property, because I think that should be taken into consideration. I really don't think that everyone's going to be driving from Napa or from St. Helena and looking for a parking place. I just have that sense. So, with that said, I am willing to support the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
I agree with Councilmember Mueller as well. I support the use 100%, and I think it's going to be a great asset. And I do think that lobby does add something that this community does not have. When the time comes for the parking management plan, I think we need to have a long discussion about that to ensure that it's going to continue and move forward, and be monitored, and be controlled. I do like the things that were stated in the staff report concerning how that will be done with the stickers and with registering everybody. I just think we need to ensure that there's no confusion as to how that parking management plan works in the future as well. And as for the use permit today, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, once again, we all seem to agree on both the use permit and then the discussion to be had later about the parking. But I do like the idea that it will be open to the public, and there'll be another breakfast place in town. It should be very cool. And so, I support it as well.
And Vice Mayor, you made your comments already. Thank you. I will agree with the uses also being made available. We went through a related discussion when Partizano Hotel was coming online, and We went through a related discussion when Partisano Hotel was coming online and we, it was actually the opposite, what was happening. Their interest was to keep things private and we said they should be public. And it took the town's kind of insistence to make the spa and the restaurant public. And then later on, they were more than happy to have the public access as it helped their, their business model. I saw this coming years ago for the same reason. It makes sense that you have an underutilized set of assets on the property that, yes, your guests certainly can use, but you're still kind of underutilizing certainly the restaurant in particular. And the uses that you've added to the lobby area to make it a very comfortable setting for guests, I think that can extend easily to residents and, and other visitors. So I can, I can support all of these requests. You're also in a unique situation where hours of operation even for outside don't impact residents. And that's very fortuitous to you as long as we keep it on the proper side of the property on, on Washington, you know, toward the park. So that also makes sense for the uses you're talking about here. And you're hearing very loud and clear, you've already heard it before, but you're hearing it again tonight about how serious we're going to take the management plan that's going to be needed to trigger all of these uses. One of the things that hasn't really been brought up and we'll bring it up in more detail during that conversation, but I think the use of that south part of California is going to change as the Vine Trail starts to come online. When we have dozens of cyclists that use that street as a major all-day parking lot for their daily rides, if they're now starting in Napa, they're not going to be parking in Yountville. And so we just have to factor that into our calculations ever going forward. Are we going to be getting back at least a temporary use of spaces that are on the public street adjacent to the property? It's just something to consider going forward. But at the same time, we also have all seen a significant number of employees walk across the street and get in their cars on California during shift change. They are clearly parking next to the park. So you've heard the message repeated multiple times, their support for this access. It is a beautiful property. I think members of the public that haven't been on property either ever or in a very limited way will be pleasantly surprised when they come and see what you have to offer all of us going forward. So those are my thoughts for now. It's going to be a conversation that needs to continue and I, you know, we'll talk to the town manager about when that next conversation is going to be agendized so that this could actually be put into effect.
Two things that I want to make sure the council is really clear of that you have on this. The elements of the parking management plan are actually a condition of the action you're taking tonight. So I want to make sure that you all know that some restrictions related to change and how, and I will also say that this is consistent with the action that we're taking on a lot of other properties. The one part which you've already provided me potential guidance and direction on, I will now work with the property owner separately and that will be coming back to you. So I just want to make sure that you realize with the action you're taking tonight, assuming that the lease arrangement consistent with the framework that was originally provided to the, by the council to me in property negotiations is achieved, the registration requirements and all those things are in place. So you will be, you know, we will be finalizing that, bringing that back. But there is a framework that you've provided me with in terms of those, conclusion of those negotiations and the terms, but...
But I want to, I want to clarify, I tried to say it in case it wasn't clear enough on my last statement, that even approval that sounds imminent doesn't mean these uses become available tomorrow.
That is correct.
It still is...
The other thing that has to happen is...
And the parking management plan.
Well, there's, there's two things with regard to that. One is the plan includes the identification of the fact that there is this additional parking lot and you also have to build the facility because you can't open the uses up until the parking is prepared and ready.
I think, I think we're clear on that. Is there a motion to be had?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-3318, approving Master Plan Development Plan Amendment, including Design Review Amendment and Use Permit Amendment to allow Hotel Yountville located at 6462 Washington Street, APN 03609026 and 03609038 to open the Y Bar, Hopper Creek Kitchen Restaurant and Spa Aqua facilities to the general public.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is unanimously passed. Congratulations on that and we will be speaking about the next step. And thank you for your patience as we work through all of our public hearings tonight. We already have addressed our administrative item that was next on the agenda, so we are going to move forward to our staff informational report on Hopper Creek. It's been a very busy creek.
You're exactly right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Tonight we have an update for the Hopper Creek Flood Control Project. I think it is timely since it seems like the Hopper Creek is needing to expand beyond its bank. So in the past week, there hasn't been an awful lot of visible work with the few remaining plants and shrubs being planted, some ground cover being planted at the Oak Circle and Heather Site. However, with the rain this week, we did have a few questions on, on what exactly was going on with that project. There were some comments made on some social media. I just wanted to clear some of that up this evening. Some, there was some concern that the work that we have done hasn't done much to alleviate the flooding at Hopper Creek and Heather and, and they're right. That's because the, as you all know, the storm drains have not been installed yet from, from here at the, at the west end of town, the Hopper Creek at the intake at Fennell. And then the pipes will be traversing down Fennell and then the outfall of that Beard Ditch. So because of our utility relocation process, those pipes have not been installed yet. However, the contractor is ready to go. We have secured a dirt dump, someplace to get rid of our soil. We're just waiting for the weather to break at this point. However, as you can see from the pictures, Hopper Creek at that location was quite full and it did spill over just for a short time, for about an hour this morning, from 10:00 AM to about 11:00. And once the rain let up, as was noted earlier, the creek went down pretty quick. So that's kind of going to be what's going on right now. We're in saturated soil conditions. The majority of the rain that falls up in the hills comes down here through town. And if it holds at all here, the storm holds at all here, either in town or up in the hills, you're going to see a little bit of what happened today, which most of us who have lived in town for a while recognize as a typical 10-year storm or better with water kind of spilling over and running down Oak Circle and/or Mulberry. We didn't see Mulberry spill today. However, had it continued raining for much longer at the, at the rate it was raining or had this, had the storm kind of held, had a few more downpours, you might have seen that happen as well. So I think I should just caution people to remember the project's not finished yet and the biggest portion of what we're going to see with the project is still yet to come. So hopefully it will relieve some of that nuisance flooding that we've all kind of been used to seeing in these bigger storms.
Councilmember Muller, question?
So to that discussion, do we need a period of three days or five days or two weeks before the company, I forget their name, is going to come in?
No, actually, that's, that's a great question. So they're at the point now where if it's dry, they can work. So as long as it's not raining at nine o'clock when they start, they can...
Tomorrow it won't be raining, so they'll be out there?
They, they will not be out tomorrow. We're still, we're still, they need to move out, so they're, they're working on trying to get out. But I anticipate them being out next Monday with the weather reports of long-range forecasts for some dry weather starting next Monday. We're looking for them to get out. They will be out tomorrow to repair some of the ditches that have been sinking from some of the earlier street repairs. And start getting some of that prep work accomplished. It wouldn't surprise me to see them start trying to do some excavation and plant some manholes ahead of the pipes going in the ground. However, I haven't had, had a conversation with them relating to that evolution. So it wouldn't surprise me to have them show up tomorrow. On the other hand, I don't, I don't anticipate them getting ready to start putting pipe in the ground tomorrow.
So we don't have to move our cars in Heritage? Okay.
You don't have to move your, I will say, that, that's another great comment, just to follow up on that comment. So there have been a few questions about the Heritage neighborhood and access. And our response and what we, what we required in the conditions for the work is that at least one access of the two be open at Heritage at all times. So there may be some delays if you have a preferred method to get into and out of Heritage, but you will have access at one end of this neighborhood or the other at all times.
It's really communication. Maybe we can keep the next-door Yountville, you know, information kind of going out because I tell people to call me anytime and they take me at my word.
Well, I will say that we will be using a variety of social media. Priya Nixon, our management fellow is, is very skilled at getting those messages out. We're trying to use a wide variety of, of media to make sure that everybody is aware of what's going on. And next door will be certainly one of those...
Also want to remind everybody associated with this project, we actually have a project website and a tracking mechanism so all of those residents. I do think what you're going to see is when we're ready to mobilize, we will walk the neighborhoods again with a handout to remind them of the game plan because basically we're still going to execute the same game plan, it's just three months delayed. And it's going to have to have a weather factor and a little bit of common sense that people are going to have to apply. But those same elements that, commitments that we made too in terms of progress, you know, they will work incrementally from Beard Ditch coming to Hopper. And most of that work will be in Fennell. So the biggest, the biggest impact are going to be to the through traffic that use Fennell. Residents in Vista will be able to get out. They may have to traverse through the Vista neighborhood and out Washington Park in that area when they're in the middle of it. That's going to be the biggest impact and we'll walk through and keep everybody, so everybody knows where we're at with that.
But Fennell will, will Fennell always have a lane open for local traffic or at some point the whole thing is going to be closed?
There will be at no point where the whole thing be closed, but there will be portions of that road that will be severely limited and restricted.
Obviously, when they're, when they're in the middle of the intersection...
Right.
That will be challenging.
That will be very challenging. Again, the terms of the permit and our conditions for the work were that the road is not closed for any longer than 20 minutes at a time. So people should have access, give or take, within 20 minutes of wanting, needing to have that access. So residents who certainly live at those areas on Fennell that only have Fennell as an access, that's why we originally intended that time limit, but it's going to apply to the entire stretch of work on Fennell. So as long as they have access and they're able to transition people through the Heritage neighborhood or through the Vista neighborhood back through Washington Park, that, that meets the terms of the permit. And I expect them to use those to try to do the kind of work that you're talking about that could be challenging for access and, and the work they need to do.
Okay. Councilmember Doran Becker, looking this way?
And Joe, just to clarify, so you say that when the pipes are installed at Fennell, that is going to alleviate the problem at Oak Circle and Heather?
We, I, the modeling suggests that it will have, it will have an impact. So what you will see is probably less of the nuisance flooding like today where it just barely spilled over. We anticipate that that probably won't be the case in these type of storms. Certainly in the larger storms, all, all of the things that we're used to seeing are probably going to occur. Maybe not to the extent that we see them occurring now, but I would say you can expect that the kind of nuisance flooding that we saw this morning will probably not happen on the regular basis that we're used to seeing it. So that's one thing those pipes are going to solve for sure.
Well, I'm really glad that on Oak Circle, and I've been calling it our new duck pond because we have two families of ducks living there now.
So you now have an environmental relocation issue on your hands.
We provide a habitat.
Maybe, maybe we can encourage PG&E to come clean up the mess they've left in the Vista neighborhood with their spray painting and breaking of the curbs and, and subpar filling of their vaults, et cetera.
I had a conversation with PG&E this afternoon anticipating that very question and comment this evening. I have their commitment that they will be here in two days to remove the paint marks on Vista and Forester. As soon as the weather breaks, they're going to try to get the paving and concrete done on Vista and Vineyard Circle. They will be out, the contractor will be out tomorrow to, to try to put some temporary patch into the, into the patches on Fennell.
Yeah, those are getting, as, as the photo I sent you today indicated, potholes in, in the sagging trenches now.
Potholes in the potholes.
Yeah. But there's also still curb damage on Vista left over from some of that trench work from...
Yeah, they're going to restore, they'll restore that and also do the paving there on Vista and Fennell for that first part of the work that went on that was not associated with this work, but became associated with this as the delay went on and on and on.
Yes. We don't want to go back on that conversation again. Okay. Any more on the update?
I think that covers it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much. We have some meeting reports. Actually Flood Control meets tomorrow. No, NCTPA meets tomorrow. Flood Control meets next Tuesday. And is there a mandatory report on Upper Valley Waste Management? Did all the Christmas trees get picked up by somebody?
People chopped them up or they had free, could take them to the dump for free. So they're all gone that I know. I haven't seen any laying around the street, but anyway...
We have picked up a few.
They did pick up a few?
No. The town did.
Oh, the town did. Okay, that's why I haven't seen them.
We think clawed in the creeks.
Good job, you guys. So don't be too nice to people because then they'll keep putting more and more out next year. So it's, anyway, Upper Valley Waste Management, the January meeting was canceled and next meeting is February the 8th.
Very good. Reports and announcements, I certainly wanted to bring up the fact that Yountville at our community center is hosting a Super Bowl, excuse me, the NFL Pro Football's 50th Championship Game at the community center on September 7th. We have a very unique opportunity of having six Hall of Fame football players joining us to tailgate and watch the game, interact with folks that buy tickets. And the event is going to support brain injury research done by the Tug McGraw Foundation as it relates both to sports injuries and military combat injuries. So it's a very good cause and a very fun afternoon, so make sure you check out the Town of Yountville or the Chamber of Commerce website for more details.
You might want to amend that because you said it would be on September the 7th rather than February the 7th.
February 7th.
And I have an announcement here.
I don't know why I was thinking September, but February 7th. Thank you for that clarification. Vice Mayor, did, yeah.
Either, either I can go first for a second. I don't care.
Are you going to talk about the crab feed?
I am, but you're welcome to go.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So if everyone hasn't marked their calendar, you have just several, three, four days left to get your tickets to the Kiwanis Crab Feed. It's going to be this Saturday. We're not sold out yet, are we? Are we, we're getting close though, so get your tickets now. We're very close.
Plenty of crab?
Plenty of crab. I guess it's been authorized to, to be utilized. We're getting it from a, a safe place, so hope to see everyone there.
Yeah.
No guarantee. I'm a vegetarian, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully no one has heard that through the mic mute that we have on your mic. With that being the case, this Saturday night, bring your money. The money for, or the monies go to a good cause. It's Yountville Kiwanis, which supports local youth and different programs that we have here in the community. And so I look to see everyone in council chambers and on TV there this Saturday night. Thank you so much.
And I want to thank Kiwanis for stepping up and supporting the NFL Watch Party also with fundraising opportunity there. Councilmember Muller, did you have anything further to add about the crab feed?
Well, yeah, because, you know, you're always supposed to go who, what, when, where, and why. So it starts at 6:00 and it's going to be in the community center, so. So, it starts at 6:00, and it's gonna be in the community center, so there you have it. The rest of the...
On Saturday.
I should've had you do it.
He did, he got, he got...
He got the when, where, and why.
Yeah, he got that part.
At great risk, I do need to make one small caveat. If I'm not mistaken, the wine reception starts at 5:30. So, we, we do the hosted wine and, that's included as part of your ticket, with some of the great Yountville tasting rooms, um, from, starting at 5:30 as the precursor, as you then move on into the main dining hall and the community center.
And don't forget your crab hats and your crab shell crackers.
And your checkbooks.
And your check. Any other announcements?
I have no further comments on staff or council members tonight.
Uh, we have no, thank, we have no closed session, uh, on the agenda tonight, which is great, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to February 2 at 6:00 PM.
Second.
That was Councilmember Moeller, seconded by Councilmember Doran Becker. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and good night.